Including some veterans. And we're on the air, so everyone behave. December 16th is the date. 2013 is the year. This is our city council meeting. I'm Mayor William S. Barnett. 7:00 PM at City Hall is where we are a little bit after. And our address is 200 North Lake Street. If you're using it for those with GPS. The meeting is called to order. I'm going to ask everyone to please rise if they would for our pledge of allegiance. Excuse me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a review of justice for all.
Okay. Sandy Wasson, our new city clerk, could you please give us our roll call this evening?
Councilmember Malama.
Here.
Shippers.
Here.
Spelman.
Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Barnett.
Here. Thank you for taking care of that, Sandy. First up, before we get too excited with our proclamations tonight, approval of the agenda. And we do have an agenda that's on the table. I did get correspondence from at least one council member asking to add some things, but how are we doing with our agenda this evening, council? As presented or as amended, how would council like to proceed?
Is there anything to add?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we do need to add one item with respect to FOIA appeal. We'd like to suggest that we add it under the city manager's report and create item
Anything else from any of the council members as to our agenda? Any other requested changes? Hearing none, we would proceed with a motion in support, hopefully.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
And there is support. Any further discussion? Hearing none, could we please have a roll call? Sandy.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Spelman.
Stevens.
Yes.
Malama.
Yes.
Mayor Barnett.
Yes. Motion carried. Okay, so we do have some proclamations tonight, and I got a nice, I received a nice thank you card in advance from all of the gals and representatives from the, including head coach, Michelle Brynes, who's in the house tonight. So I want to thank you each for the card in advance. Thank you for doing that. You're all seated up here. But we do have our Cadillac varsity volleyball team in the house tonight. I'm going to come around. Mr. Stevens, council member, and Mayor Pro Tem, you were kind enough to help me out on the other. So why don't you just come on up? I'll give you some of these. Try not to hit anyone over the head with the hammer tonight or on the fingers. He sits away from me a few inches if you watch closely on TV for a reason. Thank you.
Two or three of which are now saying.
Yeah, you just take those. We're going to invite, first of all, I see the coaches are in the house tonight. Just bring two with you tonight, or you have more? And Jen Brown is here, the assistant, one of the assistants, actually, right? And Michelle Brynes is here with her daughter, Renee.
Mayor Barnett.
Look, any other Bryneses in the house?
Did he want to use them?
Okay. Would you two mind coming up, and Stanley, Bobby?
Mayor Barnett.
Yes.
Microphone.
Okay.
Right there.
Microphone, not the microphone, the prices right.
Yeah, they want to hear everybody's name at home.
Okay. All right. Hopefully you didn't miss too much of that. In the house, and I was asked to hold it away from my loud mouth a little bit, so I'll do that tonight. But with us in the house are the couple of the coaches. And I see our superintendents here. Do you want to come up as well? Joe Spry is in the house as well. Anyone from the athletic department here tonight? Rich or Marcia Grace, which I don't mention enough of Marcia and her hard work. I think that's going to do it, though. This is Michelle Brynes. Coach Brynes received the key to the city last year for all of her wins, and she has a support team. Jen Brown is one of those coaches. Maybe you can tell us a little bit about your coaching staff. And I see Joe Spry is here from the school as well, from the administrative side.
We have Jen Brown, who's my varsity assistant. Sue Pretznow is the JV coach. Karen Lucy is our freshman coach. Jane Agron and Kelly Boss are our eighth grade coaches. And Angie Biller is our seventh grade coach.
Okay. So those are the entire team, just as the football coaches brought a whole van full of people.
It takes a van full.
It does. It does take a van full of high school coaches. I'm sure there's a joke in there somewhere. Joe Spry is here. We'll give her maybe a word at the end here, but the kids are here, and this is about the student athletes that we have in our, in our school. There's a couple of them that go by the name Mo. We won't mention those, and they'll make the listeners figure that out, or viewers at home. But we did do a proclamation in your honor, because we're so proud of your efforts, all of you. They're sitting in two different areas of the room, I see, on right and left. But very, we're very pleased to have you in the house this evening. We're honoring you on behalf of the city, the city council, all the citizens that you see out there, the houses and the cars going around. That's who we represent, and we're acknowledging your efforts and what you folks have pulled off as student athletes in representing our school throughout the state of Michigan, literally, at the state semifinal level. And it was a pleasure to come to some of your games. I wish I could have attended more. It was a tough time for me with my time, but I did get to see a number of games. And again, outstanding volleyball is taught by these coaches, the staff, the school system. It's just remarkable how good you guys are at what you do, and it just shows what you're going to do when you grow up to become young adults and adults and continue to give to our community and to yourselves positive things. So thanks for coming down. It is a proclamation. It's very official. I have Art Stevens, who's my Mayor Pro Tem, up here helping, because he is good at that. And I like to call him into duty when I can, which isn't often. The proclamation reads as follows, and I'm going to call each of you up, if you don't mind, and then you can mosey over in that corner over there. Your captain, do you have more than one captain?
Two captains.
Okay. One of the two captains can think of something nice to say after we get the proclamations. And there's no pointing. But you can come up and receive the proclamation from council member and Mayor Pro Tem Stevens. But this is from all of us up here. Sherri is unfortunately not able to be here tonight, but would have liked to honor your efforts as well. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the 2013 Cadillac Viking Varsity volleyball team finished the season with a record of 45 and 8 and 1, which I'm assuming is one tie. And they finished second in the Big North Conference with a conference record of 10 and 2. And whereas the team earned the titles of regional and district champions and advanced all the way to the MHSAA state volleyball semifinals in Battle Creek, Michigan. And whereas the Cadillac volleyball program has earned eight straight, eight straight district championships, and this team was a part of that. And whereas the program has earned five straight regional championships and seven regional championships in the last eight years. Whereas the outstanding athletes, student athletes that made up the 2013 team, and hopefully most of you are here tonight, are as follows. And you can come on up and shake our hands one at a time, and we'll have you stand over in the front of the attorney and our city manager and council member Malama. They won't mind. And Art, you're going to make sure I don't skip over any names, correct?
Absolutely.
All right. Sienna, I'm hoping I'm saying that right. Campo, she's our first recipient. Congratulations, Sienna, for all your work. And Art, if you can hand her a proclamation, your name's on there, and you're a part of this team. Thank you and congratulations. Next up, Marissa Van Alst. And Marissa's hiding back with the regular citizens. Hi, Marissa. Congratulations. We're going to get this straight. Thank you and good, good job with this team. And that's what they are as a team. Good example for all of us is to watch teamwork. Elena Hess, this must be Chad Hess's daughter. Any chance? No?
[laughter]
How'd I do? Did I miss?
Claire.
Clay, did I say Chad? I meant Clay. I did miss. Thank you. I'm in trouble with Clay. Well, tell Clay I said hi and I called him Chad. He'll appreciate, he'll understand. Congratulations, Elena. I think you're also on the basketball squad. Some of these girls do play multiple sports, and you'll see them again. Lisa Metzger, also hiding with the general public tonight. Congratulations, Lisa, great job. Alyssa Fisher, speaking of people, congratulations, Alyssa. Good job. Danny Stiver, also known as Danielle, good to see you in the house. Congratulations. Thank you for coming tonight. Here comes Mo Briggs, Morgan Briggs. Congratulations to Morgan, I think, is a sophomore. Are you a sophomore, Morgan?
Yeah.
All right. She's the younger, she's going to keep the transition, or the tradition, rather, going forward. One of the student athletes tonight. Here comes Mo Kelly, Morgan Kelly. No relation to Caroline, who's here tonight.
[laughter]
Doesn't look like her at all, in case you've been over at the high school. Used to be the main, actually, she's at the main office now, aren't you? And Darryl Kelly, our former chairperson, has relations with Morgan as well, from chairperson of our county commission, for those of you keeping track of the Kelly name. Speaking of names, and one of our school board members' daughters is in the house because she's on the team. Hannah Baker, and she's got a connection with Bruce DeWitt, who's in here, don't you?
Yes.
We'll leave the public to figure that out, that actually that's Bruce's niece, I think if I've got the math right. Congratulations, Hannah. Hannah's also a basketball player, who's doing well on the team. So you've got some nice numbers already. Here's a gal from another school who came to ours because she likes Cadillac Public Schools so much. Elizabeth Whitley, and she did wonderfully coming on our team as a senior this year. Elizabeth, congratulations and thanks for coming to downtown Cadillac from Pine River? Are we allowed to say that? Okay.
[laughter]
Mallory Taylor in the house as well. Congratulations, Mallory. Good job. Wonderful. And they're all dressed up looking so nice tonight. They're not so nice on the volleyball court, though.
[laughter]
They have this overhead slam thing. It's like early lunch. All right. Kylie's here. Kylie also is related to our fire chief, aren't you, Kylie? She's got some Norman blood in her. Congratulations very much. Kylie also an excellent basketball player, is a sophomore as well?
Yeah, freshman.
Freshman. Look at that. He has some of the Norman height as well.
[laughter]
And Kylie Christensen is also the daughter of Cory Christensen, who worked here many years, so another shout out to those individuals. Now, did I miss anybody?
Yeah, me.
Okay. All right. One of my friends, I'll call him a friend now that I'm not the mayor soon. Todd Gallnick is in the house. He's the, one of my announcing buddies. He's in the house here tonight, but he had a daughter, all these years of announcing, and he had an actual son as well that went through here. But Selena Gallnick, can you stand up, Selena? Are you one of the two captains?
Yeah.
I saw you, I saw you pointing at people. Was that at Hannah or who?
Yeah.
Okay. This is Selena Gallnick, and she's the tallest one. Who they put in the middle? Look at that.
There you go.
Got a hug.
Thanks.
She wants out of here as fast as she can get.
[laughter]
But Selena, and I think you were a second-team All-Stater. Is that correct? Congratulations. Anyone else get All-State? Any honorable mentions? Hannah Baker did. Congrat, third team. Okay. I missed that one. Fine print. Congratulations to the entire team. Couple of the gals, you can imagine having two kids All-State from one team. It's absolutely unheard of.
For the coaches.
And we have a couple of these for the coaches, because they shouldn't be forgotten. They only brought two of them, which is good, because they're both, of their names are mentioned. But I'm not letting you off the hook yet, Selena. And you just don't, no overhead slams tonight, please. Are those called kills by chance? I was afraid of that.
Oh, my God.
All right. So let me just finish this. We'll come back to the kids. Do you want to speak now, Selena or Hannah?
Sure.
Okay. You want to get it over with?
Okay.
I just want to say thank you, like, or we say thank you for all the support from the community that follows us. And a big thank you to Mrs. Brynes and Mrs. Brown for being there every day and pushing us to get where we were. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Good job, Selena.
[applause]
And the volleyball. Awesome job, you guys. Whereas the excellent coaching consisted of head coach Michelle Brynes and assistant coach Jen Brown and a couple others, as well as the entire team that you have. Whereas head coach Michelle Brynes now has coached a Cadillac high school for 14 years, has eclipsed the significant milestone of 500 wins as varsity head coach with a record of 528 and 176 with 31 ties. And she led the team to the MHSAA state finals, semifinals, rather. The finals are coming, by the way. Semifinals in '07, '09, and '13, and has an overall career coaching record of 572 wins, 184 losses. And are those actually 32 ties? All right.
Good try.
We need some shoot-offs, I think, is what that needs.
[laughter]
Therefore, be it resolved that I, did I miss anything, Art?
No.
Okay, so I did.
Other than handing them.
Let's do that. Someone's slipping. Thank you.
Seems like it's picking Henin as well.
Okay, and we have one for the super.
Yes?
Yes. We can get extras, yes. Turns out we do have one more. Okay. Is that for Renee?
[laughter]
Okay. Ally Finch. Okay. Ally Finch was moved up and not present tonight, so he must be present to win.
[laughter]
Speaking of winning, thank you again for your winning. Therefore, be it resolved that I, William S. Barnett, Mayor of the City of Cadillac, do hereby convey special recognition to the 2013 Cadillac Viking volleyball team and to their head coach and assistant coach, and wish to thank and congratulate them for their outstanding achievements presented on this day, on the 16th day of December 2013. You can tell it's official, because there's actually a gold seal on there for you ladies. So thank you so much. I'm going to go to the superintendent, who I think [applause] can close this madness. Ms. Spry, still Spry after all this?
I'm still Spry.
All right.
I want to thank you very much in recognizing our young ladies and our coaches here. One little thing to share, these are really outstanding young ladies, and they are heroes in our community, and really, we need to recognize them as being student athletes, because as a whole, they role model what it is to be a student athlete with an average GPA of 3.7. That's outstanding. And, you know, we oftentimes, we talk about the stats on the court and what they've done as a whole, and we really model that all the way through everything we do here in Cadillac. And they are, I'm so proud of what they've done and how they've represented us well out there playing, and their coaches have really been models to bring out the very best in these young ladies. And they are the role models of what we want to have all the way through our school system and helping our young ladies achieve to the statuses of what they've done. So thank you very much. And I also want to say thank you very much for honoring our school and our students as you've done in the time that I've been here. You've, you've taken and given us proclamations and really honored our kids, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you so much, Joe. Thank you all for coming tonight and taking time out of your schedule, and congratulations. We're so proud of you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Good luck to you guys. All right. Good, good luck, Jen.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay.
There.
What's next? Which one's next?
Larry.
Larry?
Larry Cooley.
Is there Larry? Is there? Missed your opportunity, Selena. Name tag? Marcus, your name tag is down.
No.
We next have a proclamation. Maybe Randy could come on in. Boy, it's a busy night for the Norman family. And we have some extra space in here. Folks would like to come on in? Larry Cooley, would you come on up and stand next to me? This is a really familiar face.
See you around a lot.
You do?
Yeah.
And I've seen you here for a number of years, and
Two years.
You've put, you've put in some time. This is Larry, Larry Cooley, Larry M. Cooley, for those of you keeping track at home, and Randy Norman, our captain of our fire department. Hope I said that right. Just saw you coming in from, was it a car accident this evening?
Yeah, we had a car accident.
Okay, so they're on-call at all times. And speaking about on-call, Larry has, he's been with us a while, haven't you, Larry?
Couple of years.
And I'm looking for your exact position. I believe you're, would be called a
Safety officer.
Okay. Do you want to say a little bit? Why don't you say a little bit about Larry first to start us off, Randy, if you wouldn't mind?
Okay. Larry's been with us over 32 years. He finally decided to retire against our wishes.
[laughter]
But we're going to miss Larry. He was always dependable, always there, and he'll be sorely missed by our guys, but he's always welcome to come down to the fire department.
Well, be there probably once a week. All right.
It's in your blood, and you refer to them, I would say, two things, either volunteer, but there is some part-time pay, but it actually appears to be more of a full-time experience for anyone who wants to get in this. How do you define his position?
Actually, it's called paid-on-call. When there's a tone-out, when there's an emergency, they get toned out and they respond to the emergency, and they get right in there and do what needs to be done.
Okay. And these guys supplement, complement, and work together with our, our full-time workers, and they're just, there's so much, well, they're equally as important to get people safely out of houses and provide safety to our own workers. Anything else, Randy? I can tell you, want to say one more thing?
No, no. I'll save it for after.
Okay, okay. He's got some surprises. We did a proclamation on behalf of Larry, and it indicates that whereas Larry M. Cooley had started his career with the Cadillac Fire Department in April of 1981, and whereas he started out as a firefighter and has advanced to a fire safety officer for the latter part of his career, whereas regardless of weather conditions, day or night, he's always been willing to turn out for any emergency. He's very dependable, and I've seen him come there. Sometimes I'm at the fires before the, anybody, and he's one of the first ones. A couple of them that I see coming early on, and Larry's one of them, so can vouch to that. And it indicates that Larry's knowledge of industry and manufacturing processes have always been a key asset to the department. And that gets, it is an important area, because some of our fires have some things in there that we really want to know about when we get in there. So thank you for that. Whereas he proved to be a true problem solver for any mechanical and departmental equipment challenges. And whereas, after 32 years of dedicated service to the city of Cadillac, Larry is retiring from the Cadillac Fire Department. I think it's already official at this point, because he's watched a few tone-outs already go, and he didn't, he didn't
It's hard.
You didn't have to show up. And I'll give you a couple words. You can think of how hard that is, but after 32 years, you certainly get that noise, and you probably are ready to go, and the adrenaline gets flowing. Therefore, be it resolved that I, William S. Barnett, Mayor of the City of Cadillac, do hereby recognize and honor Larry M. Cooley for his dedicated service to the Cadillac Fire Department and the citizens of the City of Cadillac, and it's presented the 16th day of December 2013 with the gold seal again, and actually signed by the current mayor, William S. Barnett. So that makes it official. Big thank you to Larry Cooley. Okay. Now, we have some, did you want to say anything first, Larry?
Yep. I just wanted to say I've been proud to be a part of the Cadillac Fire Department. It's a real honor. A good bunch of guys.
All right. And he's a good bunch of guys as well, because I've seen him operate with the firemen, and they have the highest respect for you, Larry, and thanks for everything you've given us at the city.
Okay. All the guys down there chipped in, and we wanted to get Larry a little something for retirement, so we got him a plaque. Mike, bring it up.
Wow.
This is Mike Moffett, longtime city fire marshal, coming back.
Holy God. [laughter] I'm begging up to put it up.
It reads Larry Cooley, in appreciation for 32 years of outstanding service, loyalty, and dedication. And it's from the Cadillac Fire Department, and it has a couple of different emblems on there. Look remarkably close to the Cadillac emblem, and is that a real axe?
Real axe, yeah.
So what a beautiful gift.
One of the Union. [laughter]
No, 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 no. It's from the Mitchell Building. We've got to have an extra speaker.
All right. Yeah, I apologize for this, but I just wanted to take a moment to thank Larry Cooley's family as well. I cannot tell you over the years, back in the day, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning, Larry's family would show up with coffee and sandwiches for the firefighters out on fire scenes, and numerous, numerous times. I want to take that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike and Randy, thanks a lot. Larry, congratulations. You can just hear, feel the hole, actually, that's going to be left there at the fire department, and so there's some big shoes to fill there. One more proclamation, and we can get down to business. This is the fun part of our meeting. And a lot of business has been going on in our community around the holidays for a number of years. We have some Project Christmas folks in the house, and I want to invite them all to come on up in a sort of semicircle fashion, if you wouldn't mind, because this year is a special anniversary. I see some familiar faces here. And I'm going to just maybe run down the line. The mic may shorten up on you, and you may have to come over, but if you can hand it and introduce yourselves real quickly.
Joyce Nдалius, vice chair.
Kathleen Kelso, treasurer.
Evrexxford, secretary.
Danielle Wasson, volunteer.
Patana Davis, Department of Human Service representative.
I've got the retired teacher's voice. First-time volunteer, so impressed. Hand of value.
All right. Thank you all for coming. You are representing years and years of what Project Christmas has been. It's been out there for 25 years. And from all the media reports, you had another exceptional year this year. And a lot of needy families out there and a lot of work to figure out where those gifts need to go and how to do the best for those families. Thank you for doing that. These are the current wave, the current team. And of course, it has people of all ages. Danny Lawson, who's sitting, standing in the middle, the youngest, maybe, I'm going to guess. Okay. I'm sure offended no one. Sandy Lawson is the mother. Sandy's our clerk. So Danny's, we've got a city connection on this, and it's amazing the amount of connections our city has with a lot of the good things that are going on out in our community. This group has been going on for 25 years, and we're going to acknowledge this tonight. Cheryl Bader was one of the grand openers. I don't know if it happened over coffee or this was actually planned, but this thing turned out very well. Sherry Spelman was one of the initial groundbreaking gals that were all Christian gals sitting around the corner at a shop, drinking coffee, talking about what needs to be done in our community. It came, that idea, I think, came from that get-together. Sue Scott was another. We have almost all the names, but we weren't... Jackie Saltman was another. Anyway, to see this go 25 years and to put all those smiles on all those faces and to help the families, the parents out that can't afford Christmas presents, it's got to be one of the nicest things anybody could do for anyone in this community. And it's gone on for a quarter of a century. So I'm going to read a proclamation. If one of you wants to say a few words when I'm done, I'll give you a little heads-up and a warning and give you a chance to think about what you might want to say. But I'd like to read this at this point. And it indicates as follows. Whereas in 1989, Cheryl Bader, along with four other women in the local Christian community, organized a holiday giving program to provide Christmas for the disadvantaged residents of Wexford County. Whereas the mission of Project Christmas is to share the spirit of Christmas and community caring with those in need through collaborative, community-wide efforts. And whereas in 1998, the holiday giving program was expanded to include residents of Mesaki County. And whereas in 2008, the Salvation Army Toys for Tots program teamed up with Project Christmas. And whereas, the Project Christmas holiday event includes the distribution of items such as food, paper and cleaning products, personal care products, pajamas, blankets, hats, and mittens, books, stuffed animals, socks and underwear, toys, household gifts, pet food, and gently-used clothing. And I will say this, Danny also, I think, put together 1,100 throws. For those guys out there that don't know what a throw is, I'm going to tell you, it's a small blanket. I just don't know how small. Congratulations for doing that, Danny. Started that on her own as a young volunteer in this group. And her mom also, by the way, is heavily involved in this as well, Sandy. So thank you, Sandy, for your longtime efforts here. So we could have put throws in there as well. Whereas in 2012, Project Christmas served 3,134 individuals in Wexford and Mesaki Counties and had nearly 1,000 volunteers. Wow. Whereas over the past 25 years, more than $637,000 in cash and another $1.8 million worth of food, clothing, gifts, et cetera, has been contributed to this effort. And whereas over the past 25 years, more than 17,350 families have been served by Project Christmas. Unbelievable. Therefore, be it resolved that I, William S. Barnett, Mayor of the City of Cadillac, do hereby recognize and honor Project Christmas for 25 wonderful years of generosity and sharing the spirit of Christmas with those in need in our community, presented the 16th day of December 2013, which is today. It is signed by me, and you've got the same gold seal as all the gals did earlier. So that makes it official. And I only have one, I think, at this point. So if anyone does want another copy, I'm sure we can make them for you. But you're going to be, end up wrestling for this. Who would like, if anyone, Ms. N'dalias, want to make a statement?
It is definitely a community effort. This year, we served over 1,000 families. That breaks down to over 3,500 individuals between Wexford and Mesaki County. And that means somebody's brother, somebody's sister, a family member, a neighbor. Every one of us, in conjunction, were able to help them. And if you've never been there to volunteer, it is the most humbling, amazing experience because people are so grateful. So thank you to the community for making this possible.
All right. Anyone else? Is that good? Thank you all, and thanks to all of the... Thanks, thank you. And thanks to all of the people who have worked in Project Christmas, young and old, over the years. Pat? Good voice, by the way. Is that it, Mayor?
It is.
You kind of deserve to be over. You want to, Mr. Roberts, is this for you?
He comes in. You get through okay?
That is one of his job descriptions. Thank you for listening to all of that and allowing us to issue some proclamations. Thank you, council, for that as well. Okay. We are now down to the public comment portion of our meeting. Just curious, Mr. Roberts, is that mic on? We're good to go, do you think?
Yep.
That is a yes. All right. Public comments are now open. It is requested that comment time be limited to three minutes. We do ask you to do that if you can at all, if at all possible. Anyone wishing to speak during the public comment time period may do so. Terry? Looks like you're up second, but you're closer.
Need to cut in front. I'm out evenings plowing, and I was, I'd read earlier this year where Mayor Barnett and the rest of the council decided to buy some snow plowing equipment that served the public a little better than the old equipment. I know it's hard not to get snow on driveways even with good equipment, so I'm referring to your, the day you had just shoveled and your driveway got filled in, or sidewalk got filled in. So I felt for both sides that day. But I watched the new Kubota with a snow blower going down Mitchell Street in the North End this morning, and I was traveling along at maybe 15 miles an hour or some reasonable speed. And I thought, that's amazing because it seems like the older units we used to have, I don't recall the brand name, they were an articulated thing that moved along like a snail. It would, you know, you could take lunch break at each corner. So it didn't do a very good job of serving the city. But I saw that one. I'd saw the walks had been plowed in a good share of the city, and I saw that machine and I'd saw the V-plow, that was doing a good job, and the snow blower I saw today. And I thought, that's amazing, the way that that moves along, you can accomplish something with that. And it made a lot of sense to purchase that.
Thank you very much, Terry, for coming forward and letting us know that you approve of our sidewalk improvements, which are many. So thanks. And that was because the citizens had come forward. Awana, please feel free to come forward, other than you've got a Michigan shirt on tonight.
It's either that or LSU, so, you know. I'm just going to put out a request that I'm trying to get more involved in what's going on in my city. I plan staying here for the rest of my life. It's very hard and very challenging to get, not be able to get the agenda for this meeting until Friday, if I want to come here and get it. I'm still not sure if they'll give me the supporting documents. Supporting documents, which tell you all about what the agenda is, are not available till 12 or 1:00 today of the meeting. That leaves you very little time to prepare, to become knowledgeable about what's going on, to find background information. I know I was told that we're under a new beta system that's doing some kind of testing for the last year to see if... But I'm sure you all have this information available long before. And if you want it to be open to public and get public's input, I really think there's some better technology out there that could get us our supporting documents and an agenda before, six hours before the meeting.
Okay. And so Awana Belterman, your address is?
820 Second Avenue.
Thank you very much for the minutes. Awana, thank you for letting us know your thoughts this evening. What'd she say?
And for being from Michigan.
Thank you for being for the University of Michigan. Yes. Okay. Public comments are still open. Anyone wishing to come forward? Are you coming forward, Richie?
Yes, I am.
What are you doing here tonight?
Good evening. My name is Richie Harris. I live at 124.5 Air Street. And I'm just here to thank the council, as I know it's kind of disassembling after tonight in some aspects. And I just want to thank you for all the support you have given some of the groups that I've worked with and our community. A lot of the festivals that have taken place have just been wonderful in this town. Little upset at what I saw two weeks ago, and I'm really afraid that we're going to slip back into the good old boys' club. Please, I'm asking you, don't let it fall that way. You guys are on such a great mission right now. Let's keep it going, headed that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Richie. Okay. Well, I'm glad he came. Anyone else coming up tonight would like to speak? Public comment? I thought he was just coming to give me a hard time. Mr. Fawcett, how are you this evening?
Good. Stan Fawcett, 1,200 East 34 Road, Cadillac, Michigan. There was, in this last election, there was one huge loss and there was one huge win. Mayor Barnett, you won. You ran the first time on the policy of everything going out to bid, contracts, services, goods, and open government. When you started pushing the policy of everything going out to win, the brink holes of hell fell upon you. And I find it most disgusting. But what the abuse you've took, you've been accused of being a bully many times. My definition of a bully is somebody that picks on somebody for their own personal ego or reasons, picks on somebody that refuses to retaliate for whatever reason. I've never heard you retaliate against numerous bullies that have picked on you. And when I spoke up on your behalf, then some of the same bullies started picking at me. Well, guess what, guys? I'm still here and I will be here. The difference is, I would answer to you personally several times, comments you made. You've been a real gentleman about it and stood back and took a lot more than I ever would have. But it's a huge loss to this city, the hours, the time you have put in. I never knew you, never talked to you for more than five minutes before you ran for mayor the first time. But it's a real privilege. You are a winner. Now you got your own life back and all the hours you spent on the city's behalf. The big losers, and I mean big losers, in my opinion, are the people of this city. And what I saw at the last two public comments prompted me to show up, like the gentleman just said, I'm afraid we're going to head right back to the good old boys' club, that you managed to hold back for quite some time. The absolute best to you, and congratulations, you got a life back without the harassment. Well, I'm not too sure. I heard some harassment the other night. You lost the election. They're still howling at you. Well, I hope it quits. Thank you. Good night.
All right. I guess I can clap for that, too. Thank you, Mr. Fawcett. I can do whatever I want. Quarter to eight, that's not going to happen though. Anybody else, public comment? I see some nice, familiar faces here tonight. Mr. Thebow's here. How are you doing this night, this evening?
There's another public comment, too, correct?
Yeah, there is. Anyone else wish to speak during public comment? Ms. Bassett, how are you this evening?
Good. Molly Bassett. I live at 115 Akron Drive, Cadillac, Michigan. Those of you don't know where that's at, because there's only four houses on my road, it's out by Lake Mitchell. Anyways, I've known Bill for a long time. I didn't expect to talk tonight, but I felt it on my heart that I should. He would give anybody shirt off his back, no matter if you sat there and called him every name in the book. If you needed it and you asked for it, he'd give it to you. He's helped me, my family tremendously in when I needed some advice on when my kids decided to be turd birds or whatever and get in trouble. And I'd say, I got a problem. What do I do? We helped me. And he never asked for a dime, even though I offered. He said absolutely not. I lived in the city for 12 years. My husband was born and raised here, Ken Bassett, and saw tremendous things. We always were behind him and supported him. And I reiterate what gentleman said before me, that we, the city of Cadillac and the surrounding area, the people are the losers of it all. But Bill will always be my friend. His wife Denise plays softball with her, love her. They're like, I've said before, like brother, sister to me. And I wish I could have voted for you, but I couldn't because I don't live in the city anymore. But you have your life back, so...
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you very much, Molly, for coming and saying that. Okay. Anyone else? Public comments are open. This is my last meeting, in case people haven't figured that out, watching at home tonight. So thank you all for coming and sharing your thoughts and being here. Not sure why you're all here tonight. Thank you for coming. With that, I'm going to close public comment. We've got the soldiers here, the honor guard. Not sure why they're here either. I think Stevens is up to something. Consent agenda is next. Somebody is.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. And on our consent agenda tonight, minutes from our special meeting, December 2nd, also our regular meeting on December 2nd. Sure took a long time to get to the consent agenda tonight. So our support for that, support, you two gentlemen, use the term loosely, we have support in a discussion on our proposed consent agenda. Hearing none. Sandy?
Councilmember Spelman. Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Next up are the public hearings for tonight, which we have one. And Jay's here. Thanks for coming, Jay. It is a public hearing to adopt Resolution Number 2013-3041 to approve an application from Inland Lakes Machine, Inc., for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate in the amount of $288,000. And kind of, I'll open the public hearing at this point, staff, real quickly, then we'll get to Mr. Thebow, if he'd like to chat. But anything, Mr. Petcha, on this prior to the public coming forward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This industrial facilities tax abatement is being requested for an amount of 12 years, and it's for the purposes of acquiring, I believe, additional machinery called the Maisiac Turning Centers and Horizontal Matching Center. The position will assist Inland Lakes with the retention of 38 positions in addition to the creation of one new position.
All right. Public hearing is open. I'm going to ask, Jay, do you want to start off with anything or give the same layout you may have before? I don't know if you came the first time around. Maybe you didn't.
No, I wasn't here the first time.
Okay.
Once is enough.
Yeah. Well, thanks for...
No, this is exactly what it is, is a, you know, it's the IFT for Inland Lakes for They, you know, keep expanding. I've been here two or three times this year. I don't know, lost count. But I know you've had a lot of IFTs, and that's great for the city of Cadillac, and it's great for the industry. And it really helps to stabilize them and keep them here and give them a reason to stay in Cadillac. We have a business-friendly community and a business-friendly council, and that's absolutely necessary because that's our largest source of employment, is the manufacturers of this community. And we need to keep that strong and healthy and keep it growing. And I'd just like to thank the council for all their support, you know, for the industry and manufacturing.
Any questions? Okay. All right, we'll have you sit down. We'll see if we have questions, maybe after everybody talks, or maybe you can answer the public's question if anyone wishes to chime in on this. So it is public hearing to adopt Resolution Number 2013-3041 to approve an application from Inland Lakes Machine, Inc., for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate in the amount, again, of $288,000. The public hearing is totally open, and anyone wishing to come forward from the public may do so at this time. A lot of smiling faces out there, but they're wanting to come forward. So I'm going to... You have anything else, Jay? We'll close the public hearing. You may have questions from staff or council here in a second. The public hearing is closed, and I'll turn it over at this time to council. How would you like to proceed?
I, first, I did have a couple questions to... Inland Lakes is a unique one in the fact that it's still locally owned.
Yes.
And I remember talking to you about this, but I don't remember, in their family, how many years has it been that they've...
It's been in business since, I think, about 1945, 1947. It's been a long time in this community, so...
It's been a long time in this community, so.
If you could pass on to the Kunes, though, a thank you. It was nice of you to thank us, but to thank them. There's been a lot of people involved over the years that have stayed in Cadillac because of that company, and it is nice to see that we still have some that are locally owned like that. It's becoming less of that.
We're working on improving that.
Well, thank you. Thanks, too, for your help. I know that you ran off. We recognized you at the end of our meeting when Spencer Plastics, you ran off, but we thanked you for your efforts. Yes.
We thank you for his continued efforts with the Inland Lakes Group as well.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2013-3041, which would approve the tax exemption certificate in the amount of $288,000 for Inland Lakes Machine, Incorporated.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any discussion or questions from council or staff? Hearing none. Sandy, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spoolman?
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Thanks again, Mr. Thebow, and please thank the Keun family and all their hard work. Looks like no communications. So that would take us down to appointments. We have one appointment. Recommendation regarding appointment to the Downtown Development Authority. Again, is this by the mayor or the process on this? There goes the attorney. Why don't we just turn it over to Jerry, and he can talk to us? Marcus, I think that's what you're going to do on this, aren't you?
Actually, I was going to ask Sandy, the city clerk, to read the appointment.
Okay. Apologize. Go ahead.
Yes, it's the appointment of Michelle Bosher. She's actually a McBain resident and has recently purchased a building here in Cadillac to open a new store. And she's looking to join that committee, that board.
Okay. Michelle Bosher is the downtown business, related to a downtown business?
Yes.
And is Michelle here tonight?
Don't believe so.
Okay. Well, she doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be present to win. Thank you, Sandy. Any, Jerry, did you have anything on Michelle?
She was recommended for appointment by Bill Cinco, who is a member of the DDA. And if she's appointed, it will fill a vacancy, so her term will expire July 18th in 2015. Normally, the terms are for three years, so she would be subject to reappointment if she wanted to at that time. And as Sandy mentioned, she will be opening a new business in the downtown this spring.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay. I entertain a motion, if anyone would have that on council here, for the recommendation. I think that it's a, I thought it was my recommendation, but I'll go ahead and make that, and you folks can confirm it. I think that's what the situation is. I'm fine with Michelle and look forward to having her serve.
And she was the only applicant, if I? Yes. Excellent. I do personally know her, and, I mean, you could just tell by reading her application that, what she's about, but she'll be a good benefit, I think, to that committee.
Okay. Is that a motion, then?
I will make a motion that we appoint Michelle Bosher to fill the term that would expire July 18th, 2015, to the Cadillac Downtown Development Authority Board.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion on the table for Michelle Bosher to be on the DDA.
Support.
And there is support as well. Any further discussion? Hearing nothing else? Sandy, could you please give us a roll call?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spoolman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Congratulations and welcome aboard, Michelle, and good luck with your new business in town here. Next up will be the CR's report, or CM, excuse me, City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. This first item is with respect to the repair of the Utilities Department's Kubota tractor. Back in October, the tractor, the Kubota tractor that the Utilities Department owns broke down and was taken over to the local INA store dealership, also the store that we acquired the tractor from initially as well. The tractor that the Utilities Department has basically is used for mowing in the summer, snow removal in the winter. At the time that it broke down, mowing was no longer really a major priority, given the time of the year. Unfortunately, however, the fix needed to the tractor was not quickly identified. The tractor itself was essentially taken apart and is now lying in pieces at the dealership. The fix required to do the repairs, or rather, the amount required to do the repairs is over and above my administrative spending authority. It's $8,270.95. And therefore, we are requesting, in this instance, that competitive bidding for the repair of this service be waived and that INA store be authorized to proceed with the repair at the cost of $8,270.95. Recognizing, of course, as we were just talking about earlier, how we pride ourselves on going out for competitive bidding, this is a repair situation in which they had to take the unit apart to try to determine what it was. We didn't realize it was going to go above the administrative limit, and we are asking for the waiver at this time by council so we can get the unit back together and then back out plowing snow over at the Utilities location and other locations, not just the Truman Plant.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Petcha. I assume that needs, we need to do two motions. One would have to be either unanimous or four votes.
That is correct. We would need a unanimous vote this evening, given the missing one council member. And that would be the first motion, and then the second motion would be to approve the repair.
Okay. Well, I'll turn this over to council. How would you like to proceed on one of our sidewalk plows here? Which, by the way, I think we got a compliment tonight, for the first time in 50 years, about our sidewalk plowing. If something's going on the right track.
So let's get that fixed. If it's in pieces already, then I will make a motion to waive competitive bid, to waive competitive bidding for the repair of the tractor.
Okay. And that's for the reasons stated by Mr. Petcha?
Exactly.
And is there support? Thank you, Councilmember Shippers.
I'll support that.
And there is support. Any discussion, questions, anything else from staff or council?
The only question which ties into probably the next motion, this repair bid compared to the price of a new one seems higher than normal. Is there some thought that this, it'll be lasting for a while before another repair?
That thought. We're hoping that'll last, so we're going to put a new one on the CIP, probably in three or four, three or four years from now, we'll put a new one on the back end, so like eight or nine years out. And then, you know, we'll see. If this one lasts that long, we could back it up even more, so.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts, anything else from council or staff on this Hearing, hearing none. We do, this is our part one of our motion, and I'm going to call it at this time. Sandy, could you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spoolman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Fourth vote. That allows us to waive competitive bidding in this incident, incident?
Instance.
Thank you. Instance. Outstance. With that, we go to the second step, which would be another motion. Who would like to make that?
I'll make that motion to award the repair of the Utilities Kubota tractor to INA Store at a cost of $8,270.95.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there support for that? Is there support? There is support. Councilmember Malama? Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Sandy?
Councilmember Spoolman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Marcus, looks like you have two more items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This next item, titled "Positioning Cadillac for the Future," this was something I had asked our Community Development Director, Jerry Adams, to tie a piece together to the benefit of council and the community, to try to show some of the items, some of the things that we've been working on in the last couple of years, specifically under leadership from you, Mr. Mayor, and the members of the council, as well as some of the items that are going to be carrying over and what we're looking at towards the future. Jerry has, I believe, a slideshow, and you're going to start to make your way, make your way up. You're going to see things with respect to manufacturing and commerce, other community-type outreach projects. And so I think it's a pretty good, pretty good idea as to where we have been and where we are and where we're going. With that?
Thanks for doing this, Jerry.
Well, thank you. When Marcus asked me to do this, excuse me, I wasn't totally sure how I was going to introduce the subject matter. And fortunately, we have an excellent reporter for the Cadillac News who happens to be sitting right there. And you may recall that a couple of days ago, he did an article, kind of contemplating or talking about this discussion tonight or this presentation. So I thought, well, what Rick said sounded pretty good, so I decided to take it, excuse me, and if you'll bear with me, I'd like to read it. It says, "Like the miser Ebenezer Scrooge from English author Charles Dickens' A Christmas Carol, the Cadillac City Council will be looking at its past, present, and future on Monday." And that's a direct quote from Rick. Now, I was a bit concerned, however. I don't know if you're familiar with Mr. Scrooge, but I was concerned that if I kind of took his approach, this might not turn out like I was intending or hoping it would. So I looked long and hard via the Internet to find a smiling Scrooge. And I found something close, okay? And what I want to do, because I, this is going to be positive, as Marcus indicated, it's the end of the year, and what I wanted to do was go back over the last two years, for example, and just take a brief look at what we've been doing, both in the past and the present, so to speak. And as I do this, I'm going to miss a lot of projects, and I apologize for that. You may have some projects or activities that you feel I should have put up here, but I don't have that much time. And so please, please forgive me. And I do, I hope you enjoy this little look back. I want to categorize it, or I'm going to talk about it in five different categories. Want to look briefly at some things that have happened with respect to manufacturing. Like to look at commerce, particularly the retail and services sectors, public services and infrastructure, the arts, culture, and recreation, and also networking. What are some of the things that we've done to, in particular, approve our relationship with the public? Make them, help make them more aware of what it is we do? How do we get their input? And so hopefully you'll appreciate some of these, hopefully you can see all this. In terms of manufacturing, and again, just a lot of different topics, as you'll see as I go through here. I know you've talked a lot about IFTs. In the last two years, you have issued over $20 million of IFTs for new manufacturing investments, which I think is just tremendous. And what's very important about that, too, is that's only for IFTs. I know a lot of the industrial leaders. I interact with them, as does Marcus. And there's also a lot of investment that never comes before you in terms of IFTs. So you can bump this up by several million dollars. So again, I think it really, it's bode well, it bodes well for what's happened over the last two years in terms of manufacturing. That new investment in particular has created 200-plus new jobs, and those jobs have actually happened, they've occurred. Plus, you've also helped retain a lot more jobs with respect to that investment. Also, that investment has created the potential for additional 200 or more jobs in the soon foreseeable future. And so I think, again, that's great. As a city, we've continued to hold our own with respect to manufacturing. These numbers really haven't changed a lot, but we still have about 56% of the companies, manufacturing companies in the county are located in the city of Cadillac, primarily in the three industrial parks, which are noted by the graphics below. And the remaining 44% of the manufacturing industries are out county, in the surrounding townships and elsewhere. But I think, more specifically, maybe more importantly, is that of the employees that work in the manufacturing sector, 78% of those employees work in the city of Cadillac, in one of our industries, whereas 22% are found or located, their manufacturing position is located in one of the industries outside the city. So we continue to support a lot of employees, our industries do, from the standpoint of manufacturing. In terms of manufacturing, and Jay alluded to this when he was here a few minutes ago, manufacturing countywide accounts for about a third of our total employment, so it's extremely important with respect to our community and our county as a whole. The next number is a little bit low, but one of the nice things is that we had a low year, 2009, due to the economy. We lost a lot of not only manufacturing jobs, but other jobs as well, as did much of the state of Michigan, as did much of the country. Since that time, we've seen about a 26% and growing increase over that low period. Right now, if I had to guess, I would say that number's probably closer to 30%, 31% and continues to increase as we work our way back up to the heyday, so to speak, of some years ago. Very importantly, those manufacturing jobs account for over, annually, over $160 million of wages that are paid to the people that work there. So on the one hand, you know, we, you sometimes get asked the question, well, why are you giving a tax break? Let me tell you, that tax break, we may lose a few bucks, but it's more than made up by the wages that are being paid and spent on the businesses, the homes, and so forth, and the taxes that are paid, both in the city and the county as a whole. And then I just wanted to throw this in. We did receive a grant, as you may recall, during that period from the USDA, the United States Department of Agriculture, a business incubator study grant, looking at the potential development of an innovation center and the development of a business incubator primarily oriented to manufacturing for new business entrepreneurs. That study is now done, and you'll hear more about it starting in 2014. Hope that opens my voice. Commerce, quickly. I'm supposed to only take 10 minutes. I told Marcus 10 minutes, but you know me.
This is.
I'll hurry. I'll hurry. Again, the last two years, what's happened with respect to commerce? Well, let's look at the downtown for a second, as we'll also look at other locations. But in spite of what you may hear about the downtown, there is new business development. Sure, we do lose a few once in a while, but we have gained. And I just, I put a few of the examples of what we've gained in the last two years. The After 26 Cafe, the Clam Lake Beer Company, Baker College Apartments are in play right now, and will open up next year, the Escape Bar and Grill, Dollar General, even Mercy Hospital. The Mercy Hospital Physicians Hospital Organization has offices in the downtown now. So, and again, these are just a few of the new businesses or the new developments that have happened in our downtown. Right now, we have 176 businesses and various offices and other organizations that are located in our core downtown, the DDA district. And again, from a grant standpoint, we just, as you know, we received a grant from the Michigan Municipal League, Michigan State Housing Development Authority, and MSU, they're kind of a combined program. It's called a Place Plans Grant, and the Michigan State University will be doing a physical design plan for a portion of our core downtown, looking at how they feel it should develop or redevelop in the years ahead. So we're really excited and looking forward to that. Cadillac West, although we're moving a little slower on that than we like, because, as you know, we, you did approve a corridor improvement association, and we really hope to get that moving in 2014. But nonetheless, some things are happening there, have happened there the last couple of years. There has been new business development. The Strip Center, that some of you may call it, the Business Center, so to speak, at the corner of M-55 and M-115, as you may know, that has been purchased and is being rehabbed. Some new businesses are going in there, the West End Coffee and Tea Cafe. There's also just recently opened the Second Wind Antiques and Collectibles. It's located just to the west of the Strip Center. Javatoo has opened up a drive-through coffee facility in Cadillac West. This last year, there was even an outdoor vendor market. This last year, there was even an outdoor vendor market, kind of like a farm market, that was held at the Carl T. Johnson Center. So there are some things happening, and we're excited. We believe more will happen in the near future. And in terms of grants, we were awarded this year a physical design grant. It's being, the work is being done by a professional landscape architect retained by the Northwest Michigan Council of Government. They'll be looking at the physical design of land uses along M-115 and M-55 in the city, both the uses themselves, as well as the transportation, circulation system, sidewalks, and so forth, will be coming up with some physical design improvements that we believe will be very beneficial to the new association once we get it moving. And just in general terms relative to area commerce, just got these statistics from the Cadillac Area Visitors Bureau during this last year, as compared to a year-to-date earlier, or last year-to-date earlier, there has been 3,200 more room visits this past year when compared to the prior year. So tourism is starting to pick back up. The Hampton Inn down the road, so to speak, they've made a major reinvestment in their facility, about $2 million, and in fact, there's going to be a grand opening this week. I mentioned downtown businesses a little earlier, and I probably could have put this one on that slide, but in 2011, there were 165 businesses in the downtown. Now there's 176. So in spite of some losses, we have gained. During the 2012 to '13 period, we completed the Cadillac Area Market Study, which was, again, funded through a grant. That particular study is currently being implemented. And we've made a number of website improvements to help market, in this case, the downtown, but we're looking to expand that to market the community as a whole from the standpoint of commercial development. And another thing that we did over the past two years is we've really worked hard to increase our collaboration with the Cadillac Area Visitors Bureau to promote tourism, and that's been really exciting. In terms of public services and infrastructure, some of this is Jeff's, engineering and so forth. But again, you'll see, a lot of these are more community development. It's a lot easier for me because I can recognize those quickly, but I wanted to make sure I had some other projects in here, too. I think you all know, during the last two years, you saw the installation, development of a new well field off Crosby Road. That was extremely exciting. The Lake Cadillac Millfall Management Program continues to move along, I believe, very successfully. You just recently, or a few minutes ago, talked about the sidewalk snow removal equipment. That was completed at your direction. In spite of a lack of funds, we have done a few street reconstruction projects under the direction of Bruce DeWitt. We've also completed a number of public safety improvements. In terms of that one, it's kind of interesting. Several of those safety improvements were precipitated in part by Councilman Mellem's Issues and Opportunities Over Coffee Session. For example, at the intersection of East Division and Carmel, there's a school crossing there. It was brought to light at one of the issues meetings that, there were some issues with respect to the current signage, traffic speeds, and so forth. So we had an engineering study completed, and sure enough, there needed to be some modifications. Those have been made. The three-way, or the stop signs placed at the three-way stop at Lake and Cass was another public safety improvement, et cetera. And I think you're all aware that we've initiated, or you've initiated, I should say, curbside recycling. So a lot of positive things the last couple of years. Arts, culture, and recreation, getting close to winding down here. This one I, or this particular slide, I really like. I'll explain in a second. But what are some things that have happened the last two years? Well, for the past two years, we've had the Sura Johnson Sculpture Project that was largely the role of the Cadillac Friends of the Library, but again, you participated, the DDA also participated in that particular project. There was the Sundial Project that was constructed by the Cadillac Area Garden Club with your assistance. Relative to that, the Cadillac High School class, I think it was 1958, installed with your assistance. The historic, the industry plaques that are located around Lake Cadillac. The Rotary, Cadillac Area Rotary Club has just recently, or fairly recently, given us $120,000 towards the pavilion project. And recently, we've received two grant awards. North Boulevard Trail Project, which we did in concert with the grant application in concert with the DNR and with the Cadillac Area Community Foundation. That's been awarded, will be constructed next year. And we just got word, the Kinderbells Sculpture Project has been awarded. And again, that was done in concert with the Cadillac Area Garden Club. If you notice, in every instance, the city worked in cooperation with a local organization. It just shows you how much interest there is out there on the part of local organizations and the willingness of both parties, they and you, us, to work together, really to foster the arts, culture, recreation, and to move the community forward. And then lastly, networking with the public. What have we done to try to improve things? And there's a lot more we can do, I realize, but what have we done over the last couple of years as we end 2013 and into the holidays here? Well, we've, Councilman Mellem has initiated, and we've been, I think, done a pretty good job, the Issues and Opportunities Over Coffee Program. Not always well attended, sometimes it's markedly attended, but at least there's a forum. And a lot of great ideas have come forth from that program, and in many cases are being executed accordingly. We've tried to advance social networking. We make greater use of our Facebook site. We are receiving more and more friends, and we find it's a great tool. Initially, we thought it would be a great tool just for young people, but we're finding it's not just young people that tend to use it. We've made a number of website enhancements. We've improved our meeting calendar. We're going to continue to do that. Newsletter-wise, I'm not sure how much the public is aware, but we generate in-house a number of newsletters, and some of these are monthly, some are quarterly, and they're done for the benefit primarily of some of our agencies and organizations, like the Historic District and the DDA. And we've made it a point to start distributing those to a wide range of individuals and agencies and organizations, and just to keep them abreast of what's going on in the city of Cadillac. And in some cases, they've asked to receive them. I think you're all familiar with the Cadillac Report. That is continually being upgraded. We've instituted, Marcus has, the council a series of press releases to let people know almost immediately, or as quick as we can, what's going on, made wide use of public television. And then this last year, we had our first Lakes Cadillac and Mitchell Expo to educate the public on what, or to inform the public on what's being done relative to the invasive species, the management of invasive species in the two lakes. Well received, and hopefully we can do that again. So again, just a few things. Well, what about the future? Here's my Ebenezer again, AKA Rick. What about the future? You know, is there anything left to do? You know, so let's take a glimpse forward. I can assure you, there's lots to do. What are some things that we'll be looking at? Just, I've got a couple of slides here. We're entering, as you know, a second well-filled project, which Jeff will be heading up, but that's a major, major project for this community. We hope to do Phase One, construction-wise, of the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion, upgrading them this next year. We're working with the National Park Service and to extend the White Pine Trailhead into the core downtown. We also received another grant from the Michigan Chapter of the American Society of Landscape Architects. They're actually doing the design for us as we speak, at no cost. And that will be presented to a committee we have, I believe it's in January, about the middle of January. We are going to get the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Association activated next year, which we're looking forward to. I mentioned already that there's a physical design project ongoing for M-115 and M-55 in Cadillac West that will be completed next year. The Place Plans Design Project that I mentioned for the downtown will also be completed next year. And the DDA is working on, in concert with the Chamber of Commerce and a number of other organizations, looking at a wayfinding study, the possibility of doing a wayfinding program to help tourists in particular gravitate or move around the community. I mentioned earlier that the Regional Innovation Center Business Incubation Study is complete. There's the cover of it, which you can hardly see, I know. That's complete, and we'll be hosting a series of workshops in the future on that study. The University of Michigan completed that study for us, again, with a grant, and so we're hoping to start implementing that program sometime in 2014. We'll be, we're looking at more aggressively marking the industrial park sites. We have a number of sites, and we hope to become much more effective and, again, much more aggressive. As you know, we received a grant for the Lakefront Park Playground that's off Chestnut. That construction will start hopefully in the spring of 2014. The Pathway Project that we also received a grant for on North Boulevard, that construction will also hopefully start in the spring. We've initiated the update of the city schools' recreation plan, which has a five-year life, but that life will soon be ending, so to speak, and that's important because it keeps us eligible for recreation grant funds. And also, we'll be looking over the next years at online invoicing and payment systems. That'll be Owen's responsibility. So just a few of the many, many things that are on the horizon. So with that, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I hope, if you have any questions, please let me, it took more than 10 minutes, sorry, Marcus.
Good, good, Josh.
I was pretty positive, I think, and I wanted to be positive and wanted to, as Marcus said, those were done on the mayor's watch the last two years, so.
Thank you, Ebenezer.
He's over there.
Jacob Marley.
Well done. Congratulations to our city staff and council for those accomplishments, and the community and the volunteers that helped, because it's a huge team effort down here, and that doesn't go without being recognized, at least from me. So I'm sure Art has something up his sleeve here, but we're going to keep moving anyway. Yes, you do. FOIA appeal, Marcus, is that next on the list?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We did receive a request last Friday with respect to a FOIA appeal. I'm going to turn this over to the city attorney in just a moment, but I'll read the request for, dated December 13, 2013. Reads as follows, "I have submitted several FOIs, two of those I am, again, appealing. First one regarding Todd Golnick's personnel file. I believe there are additional documents regarding education, certificates of attendance, completion, and the like, that are being considered either by the employee or the city as possible inclusion to set employees' college credit/degree issue. Those were not included in the personnel file." And then, second one regarding educational documents for Todd Golnick. "If above-described documents are considered as described, if they do not contain grades and/or are not transcripted, they should have been included in the FOIA for educational material. Respectfully, Cindy Knitz." Mike, if you can perhaps take us through the documentation that you got this afternoon?
Yeah, I'm not sure about the order that we've handled those in the past.
I'm sorry?
I don't know about the order that we've handled those in the past.
The order?
Yeah. So typically, the council provides an opportunity.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Mike is correct. I apologize, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We, in the past, would also request the appealer to step forward if present and provide that opportunity as well to address council first, and then Mike will then take it at that point. So I apologize.
Okay. That's all right. The appealer will be welcome to come forward at this time.
Yes.
That's not the proper legal term, but it does make sense. Cindy, I see you're here tonight. How are you this evening?
Good.
Thank you for coming. This is your opportunity to let us know what you'd like us to know as the individual appealing, what you've laid out as some FOIA requests, and what would you like us to know about your position?
I am Cindy Knitz, 715 Cap Street. The initial question regarding Todd Golnick's level of education was brought to the city manager via a FOIA request on August 29, 2013. Today is December 16, 2013. More than three months later, and the question still remains unanswered. As far back as 1999, Todd Golnick has been receiving the educational bonus. Though it is difficult to determine each year, as I have not received all the documentation from the city despite my FOIA request for all amounts paid, I have received payroll records from 2007 to 2012. Again, it would seem not too terribly difficult to review payroll records from the date of his employment, 1992, to ascertain each year paid and the amount. I do believe that he did not receive the bonus this year, 2013, which is a very interesting fact. The process for receiving the educational bonus includes a memo that is posted within the police department with the employee's name and the amount of the bonus the employee is entitled to, with a statement that instructs the employee to sign if the bonus amount is in fact what the employee is entitled to. Year after year after year, this employee has signed the memo indicating that he is entitled to the amount on the memo. Does Todd Golnick have a degree? Or does he have the equivalent to the 75% of course requirements for graduation, as clearly stated in the Collective Bargaining Agreement, Section 13.3? If certificates of achievement, seminar certificates, attendance certificates, and other like documents, from one-day to one-week seminars and/or classes are being considered as part of his educational documentation, my appeal is that these documents be forwarded under my original FOIA for his personnel file, if they are untranscripted and/or without grade. The number of college course credits are, if the number of college course credits are determined to not be 75% towards a BS or a BA degree as per the Collective Bargaining Agreement, Section 13.3, I will ask, how does the city plan to recoup the monies that were paid? A determination of a degree and the number of applicable credits cannot be such a difficult task as to take more than three months.
Anything else? Is that your statement tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Let's turn this over to our city manager, staff, and/or attorney at this point, and council. Let us get a little direction from our staff first on this. There's an appeal, or is this an appeal? Where are we with this request? We've got this coming in late on Friday, it looks like, or at least last week sometime. What is the pleasure of our staff at this time?
So we received this email on Friday, and so we're recommending that the city treat this as a new FOIA request. There are a couple of reasons for that. The first of which is Mrs. Knitz, to our knowledge, never actually requested Mr. Golnick's personnel file. Mr. Matthew Knitz did, and therefore, Mrs. Knitz doesn't have standing to appeal that decision. So that deals at least with the first part. The second part stems from a request dated August 29, 2013, in which Ms. Knitz requested verification records of Detective Golnick higher education in regards to CBA education bonus payout, i.e., college degree, 50% complete, 75% complete, 100%, and amounts actually paid to Detective Golnick. That request was granted in part and denied in part, and subsequently appealed on October the 4th, 2013. The city responded on October 14, 2013, and indicated that it provided you with all the records that it reasonably believed were verification records. And to the extent that payroll records were included in that, the appeal was granted to the extent that we could provide records for certain additional amounts paid. So under the FOIA, there's no obligation to supplement responses. So even though there was an appeal, that appeal was decided under the prior FOIA request. So we think it's appropriate to deal with the email as a new request under FOIA and not an appeal because the city already heard. and not an appeal because the city already heard and determined that appeal. There's no provision under FOIA to grant a rehearing of an appeal already decided. So, just procedurally, it's going to make much more sense to treat it as a new FOIA request. And that's what we're recommending the city do. So, in terms of the city council tonight, really, there's no action for the council to take because there's no properly pending appeal before you at this time.
So what do, what are we supposed to, what happens now?
You would take no action, the city would fill the FOIA request, the new FOIA request submitted on Friday, as a new FOIA.
As a new request.
That's correct.
Okay, so we're just starting the process over again and the days are counting and it's being handled like a typical FOIA.
Correct.
And it would count correctly from on, starting from Friday?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay. Want to add anything, Cindy, before we?
If it's a new FOIA, why, why did I get 2007 and 2012 payroll records, but not any of the prior years?
Can you say that again, please?
I received payroll records, which I had requested in a FOIA for 2007, all monies paid for the educational bonus. I received payroll records for 2007 through 2012. He's been employed since 1992.
Are you talking about your FOIA request from August?
Yes.
Those, and my understanding is those were all of the documents the city had in its possession?
They do not have payroll records from 2000, from 1992?
Again, it's my understanding that the city turned over all of the records it had in its possession.
They have to have payroll records.
Okay, anything else you'd like us to know?
When are the questions going to be answered? When is it going to be determined what his education is?
Well, I think that we're going to follow our legal requirements. Our attorney's indicating to us that the FOIA is being treated as a new FOIA, not as an appeal. So, that should resolve our council action tonight, which will be inaction and that it will be responded to by the city as legally required under the Freedom of Information Act, which we always attempt to do so with good faith. Anything to add to my legal advice there, Mr. Holmier?
No, that's correct.
This is when you get the information right today and trying to look it over. So is there, is there additional information that's being requested in this FOIA that was not in the August?
Not necessarily additional information, but information that may be additional since the request. So, there may be additional information that the city has since the original request was made back in August that's not subject to an appeal, but would be subject to a new request. Does that make sense?
It, it does. You're saying since August, any new information?
Correct.
Now, if we're going to go down this route, Marcus, is this, is this clear? I know this has been some confusion in the past about what someone's asking for. Is there no question in our mind what's being requested so she can obtain this information? Or is there any questions that we have as to what she's asking for that need to be addressed?
Good, that's a good question, council member. I believe we do understand what you're asking for. If there's a question that we have, someone will, will contact you, so.
So am I understanding that there's been some additional documents that have been slid into his file to try and account for his education? Is that the gist of what this is?
No, that's not, that's not at all what I said. There may be additional documents that are responsive to your request that would now fall within your request that didn't exist back in August.
They've just appeared?
Would that be this year, you mean if it's?
If it's a 2013 verification request that was not in existence as of August, those are new documents that did not exist at the time the original FOIA request was made.
And she's requesting that in this FOIA?
She's requesting additional documents regarding education, certificates of attendance, completion and the like that are being considered either by the employee or the city as possible inclusion to set employees' college credit/degree issue.
Is there, seeing that this is a simpler one, is there any reason that she would need to suspect there's going to be an extension? Or is it, should this be able to get done in the five-day period?
I don't know.
I don't know the answer to that either, because there hasn't been, in terms of the verification, we're going to have to deal with the transcript issue again. And I don't think that that's what Ms. Knitz is looking for, but we need to be responsive to the request. So, anything that is not exempt, the city will turn over as a public record as it's required to do under FOIA. No more and no less.
Any other questions before we close the matter, I assume by taking an action? But anything else, Councilmember Stevens?
No, but I, I just want to add, it seems, and I know I've thrown this idea out, that potential, the suggestion of having a liaison meet with her and, and management would probably help prevent a lot of this if we could just have some communication happen. To me, it makes a lot of sense to do that and maybe it would prevent some future requests and appeals and such. I would, again, strongly encourage that that would happen. And then possibly open that door to it and maybe that would help answer some questions so that this doesn't have to be the process.
Okay. Do you want to work with staff through that on that request? Or is that a council matter now or a future date? How would you like to proceed? Does it look like we're going to grant any relief tonight on an appeal? We could leave it at that. Anyone else want to chime in? All getting in line at once?
I'm looking forward to resolution. And on a completely different note, I love your haircut.
Thank you.
Sorry, I've been, it was like, that is a great haircut. Sorry. I made you blush and I'm blushing too, that's terrible.
I too would like to see this move forward. It's been hanging around for a long time and it seems like it's dragging on. And we need to have this resolved.
Okay. Counsel, I assume by not hearing a motion, we're not going to take any? Do we have any motions or any action from counsel?
Let's just go to the next item. Say thank you.
And, hearing nothing, I believe that we're going to follow the attorney's advice. There have been some good questions, comments brought up. And hopefully, this can get resolved and we'll get to your package as soon as possible. And Marcus, at this point, is our liaison with the public on behalf of the city council. That would be your contact person. Although we do have FOIA folks, probably this is a good one for Mr. Petcha and Mr. Holmier to continue to look over and be the contact person for you. If that changes, someone from the council or staff will become the new liaison and I think that will be done by either future counsel or later this evening if it does happen.
I'm just wondering if that would be something, I don't know if this is the right time, but to ask and see if that would be something that you would entertain as a joint meeting to sit down directly and?
I just want the answers, plain and simple.
And then you don't have to go through this and not sure what's going on and maybe just start that way and see if maybe that would be a solution. And then if not, it at least gives a little more direction. Does that sound like something?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, the only thing that I need to add, Councilmember Stevens, members of council, is that all of this information is protected under the Freedom of Information Act. And so, while I don't have any problem sitting down with anybody, when it gets into detailed questions, I mean, I'm going to perhaps sit like a mute. I can't really, can't really share without it going through.
But I think a lot of it's not knowing and it's questions and it just seems like that would be a starting point. I know you were serving in that role a little bit, but it might be worth it just to see if that helps.
Okay. Any action at all on this matter or liaison at this time, counsel? Any motions at all? Hearing none, I think by inaction, we're resolving your, your appeal formally and legally that way tonight. It does, though, maybe there's the bad news, but the good news is, Cindy, that it's being treated as a new FOIA and that if other new things have come in, which would have been in the ordinary course of business, I'm sure that those will be turned over to you as well. Okay?
I would like to take this opportunity to say, plain and simple, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay. We are into ordinances at this point. We do have one tonight relative to appropriations act. Who's going to be handling that, Mr. Petcha?
I'm going to introduce it and if there's any questions, certainly we can do our best to, to address them. This is the request for the adoption of a resolution number 2013-3042 to amend fiscal year 2014, the General Appropriations Act. I must thank publicly Councilmember Stevens and Mayor Burnett for suggesting that we look at bringing this item forward again. This year, we did bring this forward for the first time last year and I believe staff across the board in all departments were very grateful for city council's consideration of a one-time end-of-year special payment. As the communication reads, "As we do near the end of calendar year 2013, there have been, as I mentioned, some informal discussions of once again providing a one-time year-end special payment to all full-time city employees, including the city manager, in an amount of $500. As in the past, this will require a budget amendment to facilitate these payments." There are, in your packet, a chart that Owen Roberts, our fire instructor, put together with respect to how that works across the board through all of the various departments. The recommended action at this time would be for the city council to approve the resolution that does amend the 2014 General Appropriations Act, which again would accommodate a one-time payment to all city staff, including city manager as well.
Thank you, Mr. Petcha. Any discussion on this from counsel?
Probably more for explanation to the, the community as well as the staff. If we remember, this does go along with last year's budget discussion where this has been ongoing. We haven't had the opportunity on raises in quite a few years. We also said, as of last year, of also looking at the savings. And I know this part, sometimes the expense side's only there, but I know that, Mr. Roberts, I might be wrong on the number, but I know we did come in better budget-wise than we had anticipated. And that was one of the things we talked about in last year's budget discussion was, we're not going to move forward on a salary thing, but if the, the team effort in, in keeping our budget and everybody working together to save, was it any close number that you can project yet, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, we had budgeted to use $265,000 of fund balance to balance the fiscal year 2013 budget, the fiscal year that ended this past June 30th. And it looks like at this point, we'll, we'll use somewhere around $25,000 of fund balance. So that's a pretty substantial improvement over where we had budgeted.
And so it's, instead of it just looking like it's a, we're doing this, we are, is a way also to thank them for all the departments helping tighten their budgets and during this time of coming in. I think the year before that, it was even quite higher than that, that we were under the budget with the fund balance. So, a little explanation there.
If I may just add on, Councilmember Stevens, to what you were saying and to the general public as well, just for purposes of estimating, over the last three years, three to four years, I think, just generally speaking, the organized work groups of the city received approximately a percent and a half cost of living adjustment spread out over several years. The non-union group received even a little less than that. And so, this is, like I mentioned before, a wonderful token that's very much appreciated across the board, so.
And we just appreciate the staff so much. We know you're doing double and triple duty in so many cases. And because of that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution, Resolution Number 2013-3042 to amend fiscal year 2014 General Appropriations Act providing this year-end.
Okay, we have motion and support. And, were you completed?
Yeah.
Okay. Does everyone understand the motion and the purpose for this? Any discussion at all from counsel? Hearing nothing, we would go over to Sandy again, who's doing a great job tonight in all the fanfare. Sandy?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Chipper?
Yes.
Coleman? Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried and congratulations to our hard-working employees. It sounds like about $230,000 under budget this year. It was about $300,000 last year, so congratulations on that. And that keeps Mr. Owen Wilson-Roberts happy, so that should keep our Joe taxpayer happy as well.
And it makes me feel less like Mr. Scrooge. Or more like Mr. Scrooge after his illumination. An essay.
What can you say?
Is this one up? I'm going to unplug this one.
I'm going to, I might use that again, actually, T.I.
Are you going to use this again?
Yes.
Then remember to plug it in.
Whoops.
Oops. I just pulled it out of the wall. We're going to have to appropriate some repairs. Sorry, I couldn't get it in.
All right. Mr. Roberts is on the move. Okay. With that.
Do you think it's the one?
Let me make sure we're going to vote on this thing. Are we okay with this, Andy?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote, so congratulations again to our employees for coming in under budget by a long shot with their hard work and teamwork approach. Next up would be minutes of boards and commissions. We have a couple from the Arts Council, October 28th, November 25th. Anything of a noteworthy nature in there, Mr. Petcha?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, we're to the public comments, the last one of our meeting. So, we have a lot of public here. I'm not sure why everybody's here tonight, but thank you for coming. Something's afoot. Hello, Stephen Birdwell, how are you?
Hi, you knew I was going to come up here one time or another.
I did.
Steve Birdwell, 1225 Laurel Street, Cadillac. The last time I was here, a couple of weeks ago, I said something about we were going to have a dinner, the Honor Guard and Veterans of Cadillac. I have a final say-so on that now that we are doing that on January 25th. 5:30, 6:30 is social hour. 6:30, we're going to have, put the food on and then after that, we'll probably have a few awards or something going on. But, and then we'll have music during the social hour and then do music until 10 o'clock at night. Tickets are going to be $25 apiece. They're going to be at the Hamvet Post, American Legion Post, city, or, Terrorist Bureau and Brink's Photomount. Or any Honor Guard person, if you know them, is allowed to go to it. Basically, that's all I got to say. If you'd like to see a lot of people there, oh, the entertainment is. Belly B is going to be our entertainment that night.
Where is it at? I missed it.
It's up to me.
Where is it at?
Oh, I'm sorry, National Guard Armory. I confirmed that the other day. So, we're only going to have probably 250 tickets for sale, ballpark. We're going to have about 300, but there's probably going to be 40 or 50 Honor Guard people with their wives that are going to get free tickets, so. Nobody else is getting free tickets. We're here to make some money on this one, so.
The time again, Stephen, so I know.
Starts at 5:30, social hour.
5:30.
That's, you're going to play for an hour, then during dinner, you're going to be quiet.
Not there, Denise.
And then after dinner, we're going to have a little dancing or whatever and play. That's a good thing. Second thing tonight, I, on behalf of the Veterans of Cadillac, I'd like to thank you for your service that you've done for the city Cadillac in the last six years. You've helped us out a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay. Large contingent of the public lining up to come up and talk to us again. Looks like they're going to hold off. Public comments are open. These are public comments, and we have a great group of the public here tonight. Thank you for coming out again. Anyone else wishing to, Perry, come on up. You're going to help celebrate, aren't you, with some more positive remarks? Did you write that book yet?
Are you guys waiting for me? All right.
Perry, would you mind giving us your name and your vicinity of your address?
Harry Elkman from Boone. Council members, I want to thank you for another year of entertainment. And down here, I got good news from friend Mike. I've been studying "we," and Mr. Stark in a letter to the editor is unhappy with the president for saying, "We consider ourselves a nation of citizens." So I'm learning. But anyhow, a special thanks to Councilmember Malama. This is the first time I ever got an email with a "good of the order" on it. I'm stepping up in this world. Now, Bill and I, we've been kind of doing things together here since 2006. I used to email him, but he was cleverer than I was. So... I don't know if he's going to be like MacArthur and fade away, but I sure hope he can so I can. Thank you.
Thanks, Harry. Thanks for all your interest in government over the years, by the way.
Terry Harvey, 68, going 69. Half my life in Cadillac, on South Side of Lake Cadillac. Actually, I was married 10 years, so I was on the other part of town, but the other half my life's been in Harrying Township, your close friend and neighbor. I don't know if I can squeeze a couple of minutes out or not. My thought process is a little slow. Give you a compliment first. I've had reason to stop at the police department a couple of times recently. The lady they, young lady they hired for the reception office over there appears perfect for the job. Not sure whose decision it was to hire her, but she's perfect to meet and deal with the public. I thought that's good. I was kind of curious what we would end up with. The other thing is, I have trouble writing now, so I had made a FOIA request out for a couple of simple items a month ago, maybe, and there's a Miss Lanning, who I don't happen to know, but her husband lives just through the woods from me in a subdivision out east of town. She wrote that out for me because I couldn't form the letters, which I thought that was very nice of a new public employee. I'm not sure how long she's worked here. Anyway, I thought that's the type of people that should be working in those jobs. That's my compliment. We spend too much on legal fees. Harrying Township spends too much on legal fees along with probably, I think Clem Lake takes up part of Harrings. We all consider ourselves, Mr. Foss is gone, he also considers himself a Cadillac area resident. It's a bit foolish to be spending that amount of money on that type of stuff when you've got homeless people, you've got some people that maybe due to substance problems aren't looking for work, but you've got, I had a fellow stop at my shop when I was outside working the other day. I work in the cold because I can't work inside. Ask if I had any, needed anybody to help shovel on places that we do snow removal. And you don't get too many people come in asking to do manual labor, so, and he was dressed in old clothes, and his younger fellow, maybe, I would guess, maybe around 19. I asked him where he lived because he was walking, and if it's someone in Cadillac, one of us can pick him up on the way. This fellow lived about, I must say, four miles north of Cadillac, and it sounded like maybe a mile to the east, and which wasn't feasible for me to, in the mornings, you never know what time it's going to snow, and sometimes it snows later than you wished it would. So you don't have time to go on a, and he told me that that wasn't a problem, that he could set the alarm for an hour early. He walks to town every day, and I thought, I wouldn't ask somebody to walk along 131 in the dark anyway, but just because you doesn't, you don't have anything doesn't mean you're not out there looking for work. There's, a lot of times you hear comments about the people that aren't working is because they don't want to work. That's not the case. It's, you know, it's like everything else, sometimes it is and sometimes it isn't. In regard to the FOIA, I got my two relatively unimportant items without any problem within, I think, one or two days. It cost me a dollar or something. I thought that was really cheap. I've been trying to obtain two letters that were written in this building back, I must say, maybe four or five years ago. I've got copy, I've got a copy of one. The other letter that was written, these were sent to me by the department, and they wanted me to sign that. And I didn't sign it, brought it in, told them why, and the department head took the letter out of my hand, tore it up, put it in the basket, and typed up a new one. And I said, this basically says the same thing, a little different wording. I guess that's like legal wording, maybe. Anyway, I've got a copy of that. Haven't got a copy of number two. I asked for a copy of number two, and they tell me there's only one. So probably the correct way to do that is through a FOIA request. I've been dealing with Marcus on an issue, and I find Marcus to be, hadn't met him personally before, to be a good, I think he could be a good representative of Cadillac. He's got the personality to be a good representative. Not sure how long you've been here, two years?
Four.
Four, excuse me. Time goes by when you get older. You're, it takes time to learn, so I've given you the benefit of the doubt. I've had a couple of meetings with him. One I had scheduled, and I'm not sure if I put the wrong time down or not, but when I came for the meeting, the lady at the desk told me that he was in another meeting that, excuse me, ran late. So then about a half hour later, I see some people come from that direction, other city employees, and the lady at the desk told me that mine was actually 10:30. The southern meeting was scheduled for 10, so I'm not sure where the mix-up occurred there, but, and my meeting was supposed to be primarily with Marcus. I went and sat down and talked to him with some, on some issues, and I guess that was a meeting before, actually, excuse me.
We've had many meetings.
This was the second meeting. My short-term memory is not good, either, along with my writing. You, I believe, called and apologized because of misunderstanding. I thought I was meeting with you, and instead of you, I was meeting with you and three of your cohorts. I shouldn't call you cohorts. So, we had a, we did have a meeting together, and I appreciated that. I stopped today, I'd worked through the night, the last couple nights, so I stopped today around noon. I think it's about 5:00 noon. I thought, I'm, this is probably lunch hour. The lady checked and said your light was on, but you weren't there, so I assumed you had gone to lunch, which at that time would be normal. And she had made out a note to have you call me. I'd either the home phone or cell phone, and I went home and took a nap this afternoon, but my wife was up all day. And I had asked her to put on there that I had something urgent that had occurred that I wanted to talk to you about, and I don't know if you got that note or if she didn't.
Okay, Terry, I'm going to, I appreciate everything you've brought forward here so far. You want to wrap it up and?
I just, I...
We'll make sure he gets ahold of you if there's some issue of miscommunication.
And this goes for Bill, the lady that spoke that you had gave some information to. I'd found that one time when I had a contract that was, I don't dislike lawyers, I just think they're over-studied sometimes. Is that a good way to put it? That's polite.
I don't dislike snowplow people.
Okay, that's a good thing. Those guys could fill this driveway. I got a contract one time from a mall, and there were about, I think, 10 pages. It was all one sentence. I thought, jeez, I remember grade school when we learned how to write sentences. It seemed like every now and then you had a period and you went to another sentence, but as you went through these pages, maybe the third one down contradicted what the first one said, but you were still on the first sentence. But that was only a sentence in the whole contract, and I think he recommended, he didn't charge me anything either, but he recommended I didn't sign it, so. That's about all I've got to say, except I think Stan was right. I think, and that's not just city council, that's county-state, it's, I guess, worse as you go up. Or at least the money gets worse more. You get into a good old boys' club, and that's kind of how we do things. New things don't come in, new people don't come in. There's things done that aren't correct, but that's how my boss did it, and when I got my job, that's how we did it, and it's a continuing problem, and I think a good share of that's been corrected. The, I think we've only got one new person come on, is that correct, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Terry, I think I'm going to cut you off. You've used up your time, but you've had a lot of good things. Thank you for coming tonight and speaking twice to us, actually. So, public comment is still open. Anyone else wishing to come forward during the public comment period? Hearing and seeing no one come forward, we will close public comment and proceed to tabled items. Marcus, are there any tabled items tonight?
Not this evening.
All right. Still not sure why everybody's waiting around, but good of the order is next. Mr. Petcha, what do you have for us to start off with?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Wanted to reach out to staff and say thank you for, this is the last public meeting before the new year, so I was going to say thank you to staff for a good calendar year, looking forward to the start of a new year in 2014. Mr. Mayor, as this is also the last public meeting, I, as you know, you are the first mayor, the only mayor I've ever known here with the city of Cadillac. You certainly have offered yourself, and I think a lot of the testimony that's been given tonight, has talked about your willingness and your personality to help others. You have absolutely reached out to me even before I officially moved into the community. I really do appreciate all of that. It's been, just, the time is, as Mr. Harvey was just talking about, you know, a couple of years, it's been four years. It's amazing how fast time flies. I certainly want to wish you very well as you begin a new chapter in your life, and thank you for all of your time, all of your efforts, your willingness to volunteer. You have been out and about in the public in more places, I don't know how you do it, than I think anyone really, really realizes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marcus, very much. Likewise, a pleasure. Anything else for good of the order, Mr. Petcha?
Not at this time.
That was the bad of the order. Now, Mr. Malama?
First of all, I want to welcome, or want to welcome, I want to give everybody a Merry Christmas, staff-wise, council-wise, and see you in the new year. And I also want to point out that Issues and Solutions over coffee will be in January. We did not hold that in December because of the holidays, the busy schedule, and the restaurants were pretty booked. I also want to thank Mayor Barnett. He's one of the most honest people I've dealt with. You never hear him brag humility. He is honest, almost to the point where it's kind of annoying in a sense that it's, he examines things so thoroughly and wants to do the right thing, and those are rare people, and I've found that. It was an honor to run with him both times. He runs a clean campaign. He runs undocumented issues, city issues. And the other thing is, is that the most valuable thing a father or a mother or anyone can give another person is their time. It's more valuable than money. In fact, it's probably easier to write a check to some organization than to donate time. And I can't think of a person that has donated more time to this community than he has. And he doesn't hold his hand out. If there's a need, he's there. And remarkable man, and it's been a pleasure to know him.
You've all behaved bad tonight. Mr. Malama, thank you. I'll save a few remarks for you in a second here, in my part of the order. Mr. and good friend, Councilmember Mayor Protem, Mr. Stevens, Arthur.
I'm gonna...
Arthur Dale.
I'm going to, now, don't get too excited. I'm going to pass up my good of the order now to do in a little bit.
Okay. With that, Councilmember Shippers, I'm going to get the last word, it looks like, out of the group here.
He's going to get the last word.
He is.
First of all, on a completely different note, we, I found out today that a Cadillac native son, Luke Winslow King, a musician from our community, has a song that is listed in one of the top 50 songs of 2013.
Wow.
And this is, this is a wonderful accomplishment. He grew up in Cadillac... He grew up in Cadillac bands. I believe he was in Mr. Filkins' jazz band. He's come back and performed with, maybe he was with, I can't remember, but he came back and performed with the Symphony, with his new wife, Esther. And I just want to say congratulations to him and to our community for helping raise prominent artists. And to Mayor Barnett, thank you so much for your service. I was always on the other side of the table, wagging my finger at everybody. I was one of those people that was looking like this from that podium. And there was an opening on the Planning Commission, and you convinced me that that would be a good place for me. And so, I got on the Planning Commission, and I really enjoyed that a lot. And then, there was an opening on city council, and here I am. So, I feel it's because of you that I've become so involved in, in local government, and I thank you for that, because it's been both a blessing and a bane. You have been Mr. Cadillac from the first time I met you. You were the one out there volunteering to play piano for the veterans' things, doing stuff down at the park, announcing the games. You're, the way that you present proclamations is masterful. You have a way of making people feel like they are extremely important, and that's a gift. And that's something that, in your seat as mayor, you brought to this table. I hope that you continue that as a, as Mr. Cadillac, because when you, when you leave here, you may not be Mayor Barnett, but you're still going to be Mr. Cadillac, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Tia. And was that in the Rolling Stone, the Top 50 Songs, by chance?
I'm not sure where it was. I was just going to look to check.
All right.
Yeah. I bet-
He's 41.
Yes.
Number 41.
He's 41. Yeah. It's a huge accomplishment.
I just got that issue this morning in the mail, so maybe that's where it was.
Maybe.
Probably should read that, and I'll have some spare time to do that, hopefully.
And my son-in-law is nominated for two more Grammys.
Congratulations.
Just had to say. It's, it's, it's in the water. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Not sure where to go. Usually it'd be my good of the order, should I go ahead?
Oh, I know, this is a-
Is it my turn to be bad?
Well, if you want the, if you have something you have to do first-
Okay.
-is the order of business, and then I'm going to request-
Okay.
-if you don't mind doing that.
Okay. Wonder if that will work. Go ahead with this. Do you want me to wait on this?
Actually, I was thinking, if you could do that first.
Okay.
That was kind of the-
You go first. Oh, no, you go first. You go first.
Okay.
Oh, we got to plug you back in.
Testing. That looked good in the Top 50. I plug it in the wrong place. Testing. Thank you, Mr. Wilson Owen Roberts.
Don't step on the cord.
I step on it, he gets all the blame. This is what our staff's all about, pretty good example right there.
Can you hit the white button, please?
Not that button.
Hit the other way here.
Hits the red button. Okay, I have a surprise here, and I guess it's my last random act of kindness, if that's what it would be looked at. But, a friend, I want to talk about a friend of mine who's in the building right now, and he's got a headset on. Or if Jed could, would you mind coming up here, Jed, for a second? I want to introduce you to everybody. This is a former Cadillac student.
Ninety-nine?
He graduated in 1998. My math was usual fuzzy, and was one year off, but you're a 1998 grad? This is Jed Raybold, and anybody who's watched, who's come through the city hall, seen our equipment sitting back there. He was a student from high school, he was in the media class, and that was in 1998, and that was quite a while ago. And prior to that time, he worked as a student in the media production. Jed began working in TV production. He worked under Marland Ream, who was helpful, and we got a little bit of information from Marland, from Kami Cook, Eric Seider, Jeff Smith, all the people that have worked for our public television. But they're back at the station most of the time. This guy's out on the streets doing public work for our citizens. He's been here, it seems like, more than 15, 17, he's up around 20 years, but he's allowed the people that are at home to hear all the meetings and see them, in most cases, as long as the charter signal was working, Mr. Gomik. And it does work. And luckily, people don't have to come down and listen and watch our meetings in person. It's great to have you down here, but I know several are looking at that camera, that are, and what the camera's showing them, but it allows them to attend. And Jed, you've been masterful in that role, and I want to thank you for that. You were a sports camera person as well. After graduation, you stayed on as a staff person at TV2. He started volunteering for many, many years, and later, it's turned over into something where he's getting paid for this. He also works an eight-hour day all week long at our car wash in Haring Township. If you've seen him out there, that's where, you've seen him in places other than behind a camera, but you don't see much of Jed, because he is behind the camera. Jed's been a dear friend of mine, because I get to see him, we all do, because he comes to these meetings. And he has seen meetings, more meetings, and been present, rather, at more meetings than any citizen in the city of Cadillac, probably in its history, because he's gone to every one of these since 90, probably '95, '96, '97. And he was in my first term that I was here. So, if you want to know what's going on at the city hall, just ask Jed at the car wash, and he'll give you a quick rundown. He's been good at utilizing computer programs for editing. Thank goodness for that, Jed. He has, was placed in charge of a character generator, which was used to develop announcements. He was very valuable during the TV production classes and after graduation. And the key to this guy is not only knowledgeable, but he's reliable as well. And he's been so reliable, like clockwork. He's down here, he was down here today, setting up early, and he deserves a special award from the city. This is going to be my last act as the mayor, as I can't help but to see him out there. He's my, the guy who tells me at the beginning of the meetings to tell everybody to shut their cellphones off, please. And that's so that the public can hear our meetings. So, this guy has been overlooked, he's been behind the camera for so long. I thought he deserved a nice award from the city for all his efforts, because he worked so many years without any pay whatsoever. And he's a dear person. And is that your mom and dad here tonight? Are you kidding? You guys want to come up? Mom, Mike, and Dad, they're both here. They were lurking around back there, and I thought, uh-oh. Along with other lurkers. It's Mr. Hammer. Maybe you guys can introduce yourselves.
Tia Hammer.
Dennis Hammer.
Okay. Glad to have you both here. And I thought of calling you today, and I'm so glad somebody has had that in mind. So, thank you for coming. We have a very special award for Jed and his family, who goes without him being present in the home for long hours at night, especially for our meetings. Since I came on board, we have had longer meetings. And you can tell if it's a one Mountain Dew or two Mountain Dew night. Tonight is just a one Mountain Dew night. Jed, we're out of here by, hopefully, 9:30-ish, barring any other festivities. But I'm going to award, at this point, to Jed and his family, who's sacrificed with him over those years, and done without him being present in his home, in their home. But the Key to the City of Cadillac, presented on December 16th, 2013, to one, Jed Raybold, production specialist, for many years of recording numerousity of Cadillac boards and commissions, meetings. He also does planning commission meetings, and he's done some committee work for us, too. On Cadillac Community Television, CCTV, and it's signed William S. Barnett, and the guy's getting the key to the city tonight for what he deserves. So proud of Jed and all the work you've done. Congratulations, you've earned that, and please, don't go anywhere, because we love your work. And the citizens of Cadillac depend on you every other week at 7:00. You want to say anything, or are you good to go? He's very quiet, too. That's what I used to be like prior to becoming mayor. Don't ever become mayor, but thank you. He would do, he would know more than any other candidate or any other citizen of what goes on down here. To have him here, he's been so valuable. For that, you deserve and earned, and you have a common. Congratulations to you. Thanks for all the work you did, not only in sports, but right here, downtown Cadillac. Thank you. Tia and Dennis, thank you both for coming tonight, too. You're very welcome. Congratulations.
Well, Mayor, you might just stay right up there. All right. The joke has been, I've been the Mayor Pro Tem here, and the joke that has been going on for a while is, I don't ever get to do anything, because Bill's always doing everything. He's everywhere. And so, this is, the only reason I got an opportunity is by default, because he's good at giving proclamations, but it would look weird of himself giving one to himself. So, I actually get the opportunity by default, I keep mentioning. Tonight, we're going to take a little bit of a chance to, to talk about the mayor, and to recognize him for his service. I don't think people realize, and Councilmember Shippers mentioned about, until you get into an elected position, what it's like on either end, for the amount of time it takes, what it does to a family, the commitment and such. And so, tonight, we are going to recognize the mayor for this. It's a, it's an opportunity that, to do this, it's an honor, actually, because of the, the amount of time he's put in, that's been mentioned. And I get to follow Jerry Adams, he did a phenomenal presentation. I should have had him do this one as well, because a lot of the things that he talked about is something that the mayor can be part of, of being proud of, to have helped orchestrate. Before I start, I do want to tell you, here's a couple amazing did you knows. Here's the irony of something. Did you know that in polling, people say they want someone that's going to be honest and do what they said they're going to do? But did you also know that studies show that when people do that, when they actually do the things they put that they're going to do, and sometimes, when they have to do something because they're standing up for what they feel is honest, that they actually, in the process of doing that, they hurt themselves in terms of support? So, it's, it's an irony. People want honesty, they want people to do what they're considering the right thing, but when you do that thing, it hurts you. One thing I will mention, and I'm going to mention later, is if somebody pulled out what the mayor put in his first campaign, what he wanted to accomplish, he did all the other things that were on that. That's another thing, people have feelings of politicians, that they will actually say they're going to do all these things, and they don't do them. The mayor has done those, and he can definitely hold himself proud to doing that. So, tonight, I'm hoping, today, I'm hoping for a community, and I'm hoping that people can hold each other accountable, and of one thing that he has had that we'll talk about is, a lot of times, being in this position, you get the front of the city as a whole. You become the front guy. You get the, you get the tackles, it's the quarterback. Even if the offensive line does something, he's the one that gets sacked. But Bill has had to do that for some years. He's had to be the front guy. And he's, in the process, it's caused sometimes for there to be people that, as we all know, just being blunt, that do not like him. And they've been very strong about that. The hatred grows. I'm hoping tonight, that, for going forward, that that could be put aside for him and his family, that it's done, it's in the past, and I hope people can, it's a request that people can be accountable and hold people accountable to that. Because what we're going to hear tonight, a little bit more, is the real side of Bill. It's not always seen, and if we could get the scene going, like Michigan versus Michigan State, and leave it at that. But there are things, it's the hard thing that he's had to put up with for him and his wife. I think that'll be done. And so, with that said, before I begin, Mayor, we have a special group that wants to recognize you as well, and I'm going to ask for Bill Bradfield and Steve Birdwell to come forward.
Thank you, Art, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor. And for just a second here, I'd like to be informal and address you as Billy B. You see, people, there's two Billy Bs in the city of Cadillac, at least, that we know of, am I right? He's one of them, and I'm one of them. And I'm one of those transplants from Detroit, bought a home in the Cadillac area about 10 years ago, because I thought this is one of the most beautiful spots in the state. I'm a snowmobiler, a fisherman, and a hunter, and you got it all here. So, I was, not a tough choice for me at all to move up here. But in the, in the time that I've been here, I've seen the performance of the council and this mayor, and it's just, to me, it's been amazing. In my lifetime, I've lived in about 10 different cities, and I've never seen cooperation like you folks have here in the city of Cadillac. You can be really proud of what this man has accomplished. He's done a fantastic job for us, and we should all be proud of what he's done. But in that time period, like Councilperson Shippers said, she watched him carefully every time he presented those proclamations to people, and he had just, just had this uncanny ability to really make you feel good in your heart about what you accomplished for yourself and for your city. I've been so fortunate that he's handed me the proclamation, not once, not twice, but three times, for the Michiganska Snowmobile Club, raising funds for diabetes, Key to the City, for the North American Snow Festival, and also, a proclamation for a major motorcycle ride that we did, the biggest ever in the country, that left here on August, or July 12th of last year, that was in honor of all veterans of all wars. The mayor was there for us every single time. And like my dad brought me up, he said, "Son, you're going to be on the giving end of things a lot, and taking end in your life." He said, "What you got to learn more than anything else when you're climbing that ladder, you got to learn how to give back." And this man deserves to get something back, number one, first and foremost, the respect of all of us, because he's done a fantastic job. I was, I'm from Detroit, born and raised, a Union man and a Democrat. But I'll tell you what, I'll stand by, side by side with this, as he called himself, moderate Republican, and I like that. And I'm a moderate Democrat. I'd stand side by side with this man in any political arena. And it's just too bad the rest of the politicians around the country, especially in DC, can't be like this man. He's been fantastic for our community. But what, the reason we're here tonight, we want to honor him, and I got to thinking about it about a month ago, to give something back to the mayor, he's gave us so much for so many years. And right away, I thought about his performance when we brought the Vietnam wall in here, which stimulated me to do that big motorcycle ride. So, he has been a real inspiration for a lot of us for many years. So, I decided to talk to some of my friends in all the veterans' groups. I'm a member of every one of them. I'm a proud Vietnam veteran. I'm an ex-marine, and I'm standing shoulder to shoulder, and I got to get on my toes with a Navy man. And for those of you who don't know, the Marines and the Navy have quite a reputation of getting in a scrap or two with each other over the years. But you've got a fine Navy person here who will help me every step of the way, putting this together. So, before I read the proclamation, I would like to ask the veterans that are here today to please assemble in the front of the dais, facing the audience, and then I'm going to have Steve Birdwell call out the names of the commanders.
Yeah, we got all the commanders here. First of all, one of our original organizers, Ray Nelson, he's also the commander of the Korean War veterans. He's, him and two other gentlemen got this honor guard together. Next to him is my co-commander, Greg Burke. Next to him would be Tex Gladding, he is a VFW, or, yeah, VFW commander. Next to him is Big Al. Oh, Al- Next to him is Big Al, Al Rytuski. He is a senior vice commander of the DAV. Next to him is Bill Munson. He is a commander of American Legion Post 94 in Cadillac. And coming up, who was our chairman on the wall when we brought it in, and he is now the commander of AMVET Post 110 in Cadillac, Jim Bonberger. Escorting him up is Honor Guard member, Joe Foscon, Bill Denike, Ken Amlet, and President of the Sons, Commander of the Sons of the American Legion, Richie Harris. We wanted to get all these guys together for this presentation that Bill had a suggestion on and we all went together and got this for him and it's all yours now.
Okay, I would like to ask Denise Barnett to come forward, please. And Bill, is your mother here tonight?
Yes, she is.
I would, I would like to ask that fine lady to come forward, if she would. And get in the center. And I would ask the council members to please stand and see if you can fit in between some of these big burly guys so he can get your picture also.
This is Betty.
And Bill, if you want to join me here in the center, I'd like to read the proclamation to you. I don't, I don't think I need that. Do you?
No.
Okay.
For the TV.
A family organization wishes to make this proclamation as a testimonial of the great leadership provided by Bill Barnett as the mayor of Cadillac, Michigan for the past six years. American Legion Post 94 and the Sons of Legion, which Bill is a member, the Cadillac Honor Guard, the Disabled American Veterans, Chapter 39, the AMVETS Post 110, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, Post 6864, the Korean War Veterans, Dale H. Williams, Post 1996, and the From Sea to Shining Sea Motorcycle Club, supporting veterans of all wars. Whereas during his tenure as mayor, Bill has made, has wholeheartedly supported all of the major events for all veterans organizations in the city of Cadillac. And whereas his tireless efforts has helped hundreds of veterans, and whereas these groups will always be grateful for his service to the community, now therefore it is known to all that we wish to go on record on this 16th day of December, the year of 2013, as proclaiming Bill Barnett as the mayor of Cadillac, Michigan, a meritist, and we wish him well in his private life with his wonderful wife Denise. I want to tell you one quick story about him. He's just a good man. In 2011, a woman that I met 20 years was diagnosed with cancer on June 6th. I'm a big dummy for not marrying her a long time ago. She had one request of me. The request was, when she passed, that I would be buried next to her on my vacation. So I replied to her, I said, "I'll grant you that, but if you're going to be buried next to me, I think you should have my name." And that's how I proposed to her. We got married on the 4th of July. We just started planning the wedding one week before. I called every single preacher, pastor that I could think of, probably within 50 miles. Nobody could do that on the 4th of July. I had met this man one time in my life when he handed me a proclamation on the ice on Lake Cadillac for the work we did with the Muskinska Snowmobile Club. One time I met him, somebody said, "Bill, call him. You don't know what kind of person this man really is." I called him up. I explained the situation to him. His reply immediately was, "I'll do this for you, Bill." And he was there. This was one week before the 4th of July. My wife unfortunately didn't win her battle with cancer. She passed 21 days after this fine man married us. But I thought you folks should know a little bit about a personal side of a really great political leader, Bill Barnett.
I'm honored to have this group around me right now. The highlight of my mayor terms has been my relationship with the veterans in our community. Something I grew up in was the Vietnam War as a kid between ages, basically six and 12 or 13, as far as what I knew about it. And I watched what happened to the soldiers and the veterans when they'd come home and what happened in that instance. And it always was something that bothered me as a youngster. And as I was serving in different roles through the city and the county, I started to get it and that maybe something I could do would be to help veterans out, bring more recognition, turn around what happened. It was a tall order, an impossible thing, obviously, for any one person. But what happened in this community by way of some people coming forward with an idea of bringing the Vietnam Wall here, this was the highlight of my terms as mayor, was when the moving wall came here. And something changed in our community just by the teamwork between the veterans or city, city staff. And it, it was something I always was yearning for as a child, as a teenager, as how to pay back the veterans. But to have them in my corner and have the friendship that I've had with many of these veterans that are here tonight, that have, are not just vets in our community, they're my friends and in some ways, my family. But thank you so much. That it's been so rewarding to have such a relationship and that I would have never expected that or that things could have been achieved that were, that helped turn back the clock and turn things around and put capital, Cadillac as a capital in our, in our state of honoring and respecting and appreciating and giving back to the veterans. And what more could you ask but to have a group like this that have given so many things to our community, our freedom and our country, to be so helpful, so welcoming and appreciative. And now getting a nice award from you just tops it off again. So thank you all for what you've done for our country and your service. And hopefully that never gets forgotten. And thanks for this nice award tonight, William. Billy B.
Thank you, Billy B. One more thing to, the American Legion has opened its doors tonight. So all of you good friends and supporters of Bill Barnett are welcome for a little celebration. We're going to celebrate the great job he did for our city and we mean that sincerely. Thank you, Bill.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Okay. Did I mention my poor wife and my mother are here tonight? My poor wife, yes.
Long-suffering wife. You've got an announcement while you're here.
We just thought about this a half a second ago when he was presenting Todd with the city of Cadillac as the key. He said that was the last Key to the City. Well, Ray Nelson was the very first one from Mayor Barnett to receive the Key to the City.
I do want to mention, first of all, if, if anybody that, that knows of a veteran background, tonight, to have every organization present is just a symbol of, of the appreciation to Bill. That really amazed me to see every organization. And there's a, I think there's an invisible, there's an extra person, Bill. And I really believe that, that was in that picture. And it was your father. A veteran also, the military, smiling, proud of what you've done. I really feel that. On behalf of the city, I'm going to be saying a few comments. This is on behalf of our, our council. This is on behalf of the citizens. This is on behalf of the individuals, some that they don't even know yet what, what Bill has done to make our community better. They don't know how they've been impacted yet. And it's also for those, I, it was mentioned before, there's some that, I cannot believe how many people asked me to make sure I thanked Bill because they do not want to publicly because it has gotten hard over the, the times to, some people, you're in new life now. People are going to be able to come and say hi to you, not concerned if somebody's watching and, and what that might do to their job or their, their life in general. But I do want to spend a few minutes and just say a few of the things that Bill has done for our community. Mr. Adams, I'm glad you, you brought up a lot of, of the whole group and I appreciate that. So you actually perfect, without even knowing, you helped bring this together because I was trying to look at some of the other things that were maybe not as much city business-oriented. When you're in a position like mayor, especially, this has happened more probably to Mayor Barnett than normal, when something happens good, he had nothing to do with it, but when something goes wrong, it's his fault. And that's what usually happens as a leader. I use that comment sincerely about the quarterback who's leading the team and you're the front guy. Sometimes we've taken positions and Bill's had to be the gentleman that is out there up front. One of the ironies, for example, is this, this person has wanted to fight more than any of us to work with the townships. Yet the image, because he is the face of the city, is that he's worked against them. If you ask any of the council and staff, they'll tell you that's the opposite. So a lot of times you get things like that that happen. There's something new, and again, going back to Mr. Adams, I remember him telling me this myself, is Bill is a, it's a little different. People didn't call him Mayor Barnett as much. He was Billy B. or Bill or Billy or something because he's lived here so long and he's known the families, he's been involved in the sports, he's been involved in the athletics. You brought a personal touch to what it is to be mayor. In doing so, you, you brought a different people that could get involved in city government that have participated because you've brought a way of making it seem that you're at the same level of everybody else you're representing. And that's an amazing skill to have. As I mentioned, you love Cadillac. If anybody wants to know how much he loves Cadillac and see it at its best, it's the sporting events. My best conversations with Billy B. was after basketball, volleyball or football games. The pride he had in the teams, it's amazing. He'd be on the phone talking about so and so, and you should have seen this and you could hear it on the radio when he did that. You truly brought a relationship with the kids of this community that's just, it's at a different level. We've recognized the sports teams this year. It's been an amazing year of them athletically. You've noticed that and you thought it was worth to bring them in and recognize them. And you've helped build that relationship more than ever with the schools. You also can see the character of a person, of how they are with the senior citizens. I've had the opportunity to accompany him to the senior center, to Harborview, to Kirtland Terrace, and they all, right away, where's the piano? And Bill's singing songs with them. They're all singing. It's just a, to see him, the way he interacted with the seniors as well, again, another note to you is just very impressive. The veterans, I know a lot of them have left because they're going to meet with you later, but I always said, when you get veterans that you earn the respect of, that, that's showing a character and a person. And it's obvious tonight, you had every local organization present. To me, that's, that's amazing. And that's a, a symbol of you. And then there's those like the Patriot Choir that, that may have in other people's views, they might be seen at a different level. And you've made them feel so important and have been a role model. Watching Bill in those environments, seeing him with the kids, they all know him by name. They all come up and hug him and trying to pull him away to introduce him to their friends. And that's something that, Bill, you just did an amazing job with. And then giving them the role of ambassadors to the city was very impressive. So you, you learn a lot of the qualities of a person just watching him in those areas with the youth, seniors, veterans, and those with special needs. And you hit a home run with all of them. The meetings. The mayor has a special way, somebody mentioned it tonight. Somebody could just be sitting there yelling at him, just outrageous things. And he would just say, "Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?" And some of us haven't had that skill to be able to nicely do that. But you've done that very well. I think that that's something, you've ran the meetings. He has done something that I think will mark Cadillac for a while, and that's making government more open and transparent. That is something that was a focus of his. We now add public comments to the meetings at the beginning so that people actually could, which was a great idea, so they could actually give input on a topic instead of waiting till the end. The, making the television station, working with the TV station to make sure that anybody, if they have access to television, can see all the committees of the city and how they're working. You're very, very instrumental in that as well as making sure on the website and working with the wonderful staff to make sure that it's accessible. We now have a very open and transparent government. That's a lot to do with you. The festivals, the promotions of the festivals, the one thing I hear from people a lot is how you helped open the door to promoting more of those, having the roads closed, Main Street and the other festivals. You've been a advocate of that. Cadillac will always be better placed. As you were coming in, there was a lot of, I was on council and at times we weren't looking at approving things or how they were going to operate and, and you did a phenomenal job with that. We have, and I know that this is something that's been important to the public, we are, you've made that special notice to be more compliant with the laws, with the charter, to make sure that we're doing business in that way. I think it goes with the honesty concept that's been passed on. You've also pushed the bidding and we save hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, the city does, on, with the bidding as well. Accountability, and I keep going on my list. This is, I feel bad for Sandra, by the way. We had a, I had to put together a proclamation on one page. And trying to be fair, one thing I've noticed from all members of council as they leave, of trying to give them their due notice of what they've done for the city in the time. So trying to pull this all into one page was a task. I never am short on words, as some of you know, but this was really difficult to try to recognize Bill for it. But you, accountability, I think that you've kept us all more accountable and our city is a better place. The amazing thing is a, I, I just heard this coincidentally yesterday about how sometimes the best books that are written or movies that are made come from the fact that people, much later, it's noticed, the value of what they've written or the movies about that, what they have, it's, it's much later. You have had an impact on this community. Some of it's obvious now, but some of it will even continue to be many years as we go forward. We also, Denise, there's the other side of this all the time. It's that other person. And Denise has sacrificed a lot for this city and it's not always noticed. You don't like the spotlight, but you've put a lot of time in. There's a lot of events that you miss out on or things you don't have Bill there because of his involvement. And you really do, on behalf of a grateful community, to say thank you too for your involvement, Denise. And I know you want to come up and join Bill for the proclamation, so I'm, I'm going to have you come up. So if you haven't met Denise, this is Denise Barnett and she is behind the scenes of, and I agree with her, whenever she's frustrated with Bill, I know why. I do, I do. So she's been a great contribution. Denise, thank you very much for what you've done. Yeah, well.
Three minutes.
I haven't.
Three minutes, please.
Three minutes, yes. Anyhow, I do want to say though, Cadillac is a different place because of Bill and what he's done. You could see it tonight with the children, the role model he is. And, and I'm, in one way, this is really hard because of his involvement, but I think for Bill and Denise, I, I see them as having a future that's going to be, I mean, I feel a little bad for Denise in some ways, but no. Bill, seriously, you, you have given of time. It's just amazing, the time you've given to this community. And no one can ever get that back. no one can ever get that back. And, uh, I think you guys are going to have some extra time now. And hopefully, life will just continue. You're the, the voice of the Vikings. And I haven't mentioned some things, but I am going to in this proclamation as well for you.
More?
More. And then, after that, no, um, again, yes. This is a proclamation in honor of William S. Barnett, whereas William S. Barnett served as the mayor of the city of Cadillac for three consecutive terms for a total of six years. Prior to serving as mayor, Mr. Barnett served our citizens for four years as a city council member and seven years as a county commissioner. And whereas Mayor Barnett was faithful in his role as the leader of our community by attending every council meeting over the past six years and displaying selfless service to the city by continuing to serve on many of the sixty-five committees or boards he had been involved in prior to his election as mayor. And whereas Mayor Barnett announced the Cadillac Vikings football and basketball games for over a decade and is known as the voice of the Vikings, he is also known for being a strong supporter of the athletes at his alma mater and has helped build a strong relationship between the school and the city. And whereas Mayor Barnett as a leader of the community was instrumental in many amazing and long-lasting contributions to our community, including increasing compliance of the city charter ordinances and laws, adding competitive bidding to the buying process, which has saved the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars, making the west side of Cadillac an important part of our community, enhancing openness and transparency in city government, seeing over seventeen million invested in our community in two thousand thirteen, and helping develop a regional economic development plan and job creation plan that will continue to allow Cadillac area an opportunity to promote businesses and build better relationships with the surrounding townships. In addition, there were countless other contributions that will have an everlasting impact on Cadillac. Whereas Mayor Barnett has a special place in his heart for the Cadillac area Patriot Choir and has been a role model and strong advocate for each member of the choir for many years. His appreciation of the group was exemplified in his decision to declare the Patriots Goodwill ambassadors for the city on their trip to Washington, DC in the summer of two thousand thirteen. Whereas while serving as mayor, William S. Barnett built relationships with both veterans and veterans organizations in our community. In two thousand eleven, he was instrumental in working with local veterans to bring the Traveling Vietnam Memorial to Cadillac. And in two thousand thirteen, at the We the People Giving Back event, he was awarded the Patriot Award, which is an award granted to individuals who go above and beyond the call of civilian duty for citizens and veterans. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Arthur D. Stevens, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Cadillac, on behalf of our citizens, would like to recognize William S. Barnett and thank him for his efforts in helping make Cadillac the beautiful community it is today. Because of his dedication and leadership, many families have a better quality of life, and generations of families have and will continue to be affected by his commitment to our community. His unselfish service and contributions to Cadillac will always hold a special place in the hearts of all our citizens. In witness whereof, I hear, I have here onto set my hand and cause the seal, which you always show people, that's the real official seal, he's done that on every proclamation, it's there, of the city of Cadillac, Michigan, to be affixed the sixteenth day of December in the year of two thousand thirteen. Bill, again, thank you so much for everything you've done for Cadillac.
Now what? Thank you, council member, and Mayor Pro Tem Art Stevens, uh, and thank you for, from the citizens that have given me this award. It's been an absolute pleasure to serve. I started in nineteen ninety-five in the little seat that Art sits in over there, which isn't that little, uh, if, looking at it now, but I did start in ninety-five in November. This is my eighteenth year, I'm in the eighteenth year of my service, and it's been absolutely, uh, fulfilling and rewarding, and, uh, been a pleasure. It has been a lot of hard work. There's a lot of committees, that's a lot. But I've learned after all those committees how this whole big puzzle works in this community, between the county and the city, and all of the other, uh, organizations, and it really has helped me try to do the best I can for the city of Cadillac. I did want to thank my family, and there's several members of my family, because, uh, due to marriage in some ways, and also people that are like family that are here tonight. My wife Denise, who stood up, my mom, who doesn't like the spotlight worse than Denise, is here tonight. Betty, both came for my swearing-in ceremony, which you always wonder what your, uh, career as a mayor will be in your first day. I certainly have seen it and what it is now, looking back, and it has been, uh, quite an, uh, obligation. So it's going to be a, uh, a tough job for Carla, who's present. I want to wish her the best of, uh, luck in, uh, her endeavors as mayor coming up. It is a lot more than, uh, we would ever expect going into this, and you'll certainly see that as time goes on, and it will wear on you, and it's, uh, relief in some ways to get it off my shoulders, and I wish you the best to take this forward. I will miss it, though, in other ways, because there is a rewarding side to it. You wouldn't know it if you sat and just listened to public comments or letters to the editor or online comments. You would wonder why anybody with any rational thinking would serve in this position, but maybe that's part of the, the, uh, resume requirement. But my family has been unbelievable. My cousins that are through marriage, and they're just like real cousins, in fact, they are. Larry and Mary Bechtel are here, have been super supportive through all this. Um, the Kennard family, two of them are in the house, and I've got the veterans community that's, that I see places. And, um, you know, you see these folks around, and you sometimes don't think twice about what they've given to our community. And other friends that I've gotten to know, uh, just by being mayor, and, uh, people that work at different things. Rick Liptak comes to mind at M.DOT and the Roundabout, that they are still friends with me, even though I disagree. But I've met so many nice people by being mayor, and, uh, above and beyond my family. My poor mother is here, and my wife was also poor, because they have to work for me on a daily basis to get me in the right place, with the right clothes on, the right food in my stomach. While I'm out doing all this nice stuff, allegedly, uh, these two have been at home and/or, uh, different locations, filling in the, the holes for me. And even my family members, too, uh, beyond that, uh, have been there for me. But they wonder how one person can be at so many places. It's because I have two people either pointing me, driving me, delivering, ordering, yelling, "Get there. Don't be five minutes late again." But Betty and Denise have gone through a lot, uh, of extra work for the community to, uh, have the mayor, who I've been for the last six years, in the right place at the right time and the right mindset, and not ha, not to have to worry about all the rest of the things, like dishes and garbage and other things, snow plowing.
Are you saying you're going to be doing the dishes now?
Yes. But anyway, it's a team effort, a family effort. So, uh, I want to thank my family first, and I had a short list, and I tell you, it won't be much longer. My friends, I've had friends, actually. I do have friends, even though I'm an attorney. Some of them just left because they thought I might point them out, but I do have friends, and my friends have paid a price, too, for, uh, having their friend be a, in the political limelight, because it's sometimes, it rubs off, and I'm really sorry that that's happened for those people. Uh, and I'm going to give them a break by getting out. I probably would have never left, so this is a, a positive thing in many ways, that I will, uh, be able to get out of here without having to make the decision myself. Um, so my friends have been wonderful, and, uh, some of which are sitting right on the, uh, city council here. I wouldn't have run for this in nineteen ninety-five had not Mayor Blanchard come to me, and, uh, he had met me through his drive-through party store, restaurant, uh, which my wife worked there summers or weekends, and with her, it was her second job. But that's where I met Mayor Blanchard, was because of Denise. And he took a liking to me and asked me to jump on the city council when there was an opening. So the, uh, that's a nice tradition. He was here eighteen years. I've been here six, between the two of us, a quarter of a century here. And he was a good friend that I'll miss forever. Um, but our, uh, our staff has been wonderful. We have the greatest staff. You could see it tonight. I always say Jerry's our MVP. All of them, though, are, are MVPs, because they are covering different areas, whether it be your toilet, our lake, um, our streets, our, uh, potholes and, uh, plowing. We get a lot of nice calls, but our staff has been wonderful, and, and it's been, some of it was tough. We went through some transition here. I think Cadillac is in the right position to move forward and do great things. Um, and I miss some of our old staff. They had worked very hard. Some have retired and some moved on. Um, and I wish them well. And our current staff was really a great team. So, uh, moving forward, I know we'll be okay. We only have one new council member coming on, the same team's in place, and we'll have success here in Cadillac. But our staff has been amazing. I've gotten to work with Mr. Petya on a very close basis, and I've enjoyed that very much. And we'll miss Marcus on a daily basis. He still knows how to get ahold of me. Mike Homier, who walked in under, uh, um, exciting circumstances to have a new attorney's, uh, firm come into town from out of town that have, uh, saved us some money and provided a different outlook on legal advice that has been, uh, embraced by our council. And you've done a great job in every area, and I wish, wish Mike the best, even though he is, as mentioned, an attorney. Councilmember Melma, thanks for saying nice things tonight, uh, with regard to my service. And you're, this is the guy you want to have in a foxhole. Talk about veterans and soldiers, but you want to have him in your foxhole, working with you, because he's as loyal as possible, could, as, could ever be possible for a human being, uh, to give to you, uh, loyalty. And, uh, I really appreciate his wisdom. He always teases himself to be, for being a little older than the rest of us, but it's come in handy, and, and, uh, your friendship has been amazing, your work for the city has. Congratulations, uh, you're sticking around for four more years, whether you know it or not. And, uh, thank you to, to Sue as well, who's sacrificed. Going around the table, Sherry, I was caught off guard last week, uh, two weeks ago, she was in the house here and thanked me for my service and all the good things I did, which was very nice of her to say, uh, to point out the positives, and, uh, because that always doesn't come along. But she's not here tonight and couldn't be here, but she did say some really nice things, and I just sat there and looked around. I didn't know what to say, and I wish I would have thanked her two weeks ago, but I did not. T.I. Shippers and I, we were, uh, close friends for many years. I didn't really know I was responsible for steering you in here, but we're glad to have you very much. T.I. and I were in, uh, Chicago on nine eleven. We were hoping to do a show at the Daily Plaza to promote Michigan in downtown Chicago with all the business folks coming in. And we got some really bad news in the morning. I didn't understand why our gig was canceled and why people were driving eighty miles an hour out of Chicago, but, uh, we've been through a lot, and, uh, our mu, music side will keep being friends. We were friends from before. I was worried that, uh, friendship might be affected by serving so close with our elbows, but it never, uh, never crossed any bad areas, and she is...
Never hit you on the head.
Not with, and she comes with a cane, so that's usually my first, uh, clue that I might want to be nicer than, than most people. But thank you for your service. You've brought a new outlook to our city council that I don't think has been here before, and it's been helpful for us all to, uh, to hear your perspective. And congratulations on your next term, and good luck with the, the same gang here, for the most part. You'll do well. And, do you want to speak? I'm teasing. Hey, Art Stevens, uh, who, he actually ran against me in two thousand. We'll talk politics real quickly and get that over with, but he beat me in two thousand by about seventy votes. And I chose to, uh, um, meet him after the election and take a different few points than most candidates do, and accepted him as my friend. And how can I help him make the city better? But he took over my seat over there, and eventually, years later, invited me back and was helpful, has always been helpful. He's been, uh, uh, my ally, closest ally of, of historically what's going on in the city. Between Art and myself, we know what's been happening since the mid-nineties, and, uh, we've worked together. He wouldn't listen to me for the first few years, and then all of a sudden, he calls me and says, "Oh," he saw the same things I did, which was mostly very good, but some things that need to be worked on. They always need to be worked on in any organization. And between the two of us, we picked up on a lot and were able to, to, uh, streamline things and make, uh, hopefully our city better for everyone. But he's been an amazing friend, and, uh, everything worked out for the better for everybody, and, uh, he's been here since two thousand, and I hope you continue, uh, in your position or any position you want. He actually has political aspirations and dis, deserves something someday. But it's been a pleasure to work with you, Art. Thank you for everything you said on, uh, I don't know who paid you, but thank you for saying all those nice things, uh, on the proclamation and beforehand. But I always sit and listen to Art's vote and do my ADD daydreaming during that part after, because I hear how he votes, and I, nine times out of ten, just, uh, backed his vote up, and I, it made a lot of sense. Even when I wasn't sure why I was voting in a certain direction, I trusted him. And there's been a lot of trust there, and he's not ever let me down. People warned him not to trust me from day one, and he, uh, looked right past them. And there were some very important people in our community that did that. And he was, uh, strong enough to trust me, and I don't think I've let him down, at least in most cases. But thank you for everything. You've been a great, uh, friend to be here, and, uh, to be a public, uh, figure with you has been, uh, very, uh, exciting, and I think we're going in the right direction. Thank you. All right. I think I've got enough said, although I'm sure I'm over the three-minute limit.
Close.
Thanks for, I see the, the, I will call them the cat people, but a couple of the animal shelter folks are here. By the way, Marcus, they are looking for a cat house. And no, not what you're thinking.
What?
And Jerry, maybe we can start thinking they're looking to supplement what's going on already in the county, if we can come up with a, uh, a building. But, uh, we're just starting to have some discussions with, with citizens, and it's a really good example. We have Adam Sirdell in the house, who is a young man, the future of Cadillac. Right, Adam?
Maybe.
Maybe. All right. But thank you all for coming tonight. This is my last meeting, uh, and I'm going to just thank again the veterans and the student athletes. And I see people that do see me on the street once in a while, and they come to meetings, they watch us on TV, but they don't want to get involved. Couple of them have, have come here tonight, and I won't point them out, but, uh, that's what Cadillac's about, is the citizens and the citizens that care, that, that work together and communicate what, what they would like to see as Cadillac should be or will be in the future. And I'd like to hope that they'll continue to have that input and, uh, provide that, uh, help to us down here, because we, we need to hear the input. Communication is it. I think that's going to do it. It's just been an honor, a privilege, and, uh, a very special, uh, opportunity to serve as, as your mayor of Cadillac for the last six years.
We do have the, before everybody leaves, we do have to have the official last closing of the, uh, the meeting. Um, as mentioned, at the American Legion, there's two celebrations. The, one is at the American Legion. Um, Marcus and Owen are hosting another celebration, um, in a different location, saying, "He's gone." No, just kidding.
Aww.
That's just a joke.
Aww. Sad people, eh?
But anyhow, um, if you want, Mayor, before everybody leaves, you have to do the official gavel.
Okay. Thanks again, everybody, for coming tonight, and this is going to wrap it up. And I hope I haven't forgotten to thank somebody. If I have, I apologize. It's been a pleasure. Meeting adjourned.